This time I'd like to call to order the Monday, October 20th, meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners. We had no work session tonight, so this time I'm gonna ask Reverend Custer from Mount Zion United Methodist Church to lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Everyone, please stand.
Shall we pray? Our most precious God, we do thank you for this opportunity to gather. Father, we ask and invite you into this place tonight and welcome you as we tend to the business of the community and to the county. Father, I just asked that you would bring your wisdom and understanding, that you would allow compassion in this room to prevail. And Father, as we tend to the business, we ask that your presence would be here and that we would know that the work that we do pleases you, honors you, and glorifies you. And it's in your name we pray. Amen. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Custer, we thank you.
Thank you.
Come anytime.
No need to go to.
Okay. Can I go with you? Can I go with you? Thank you. First item on the agenda is approval of agenda. I know of no changes. Are there any changes, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
Need a motion and a second for approval?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next item is public comment. We have several people signed up in the public comment when they actually want to speak on the public hearing on PB 1414, so I'll hold you over to that particular public hearing. And Mr. McCree will keep the time tonight. We have three minutes, green, yellow, and red. And when you come forward tonight, please give your name and address for the record. Thank you. And first, we have Ms. Mary Etheridge.
My name is Mary Etheridge, and I live at 846 Shawboro Road in Shawboro. My family and I have been involved in litigation with the county since December 2011. Serving on the board at that time was Mr. Idlet, Mr. Petry, Mr. O'Neil, and Ms. Gilbert and Mr. Martin, but Mr. Martin did not vote for approval. At the last meeting, I asked for an explanation of why the commissioners' own statements concerning compatibility, consistency, and always listening to their own staff and their appointed board did not apply to my case. And yes, I even gave examples of exactly what they said. Chairman O'Neil then asked the county attorney for factual information to be given to the public. After well over six minutes of explanation, legal and illegal spot zoning, abuse of discretion, land use plan, junkyard or recycling centers, my questions were still not answered. So, folks, here's some factual information. The recycling center, as the county likes to refer to it, that was approved by the commissioners to be located in Shawboro, less than 600 feet from my back door, and also boarding our family farm, has been relocated to another site in our county. Here is a picture taken last Saturday afternoon from our main corridor on Highway 168 of your recycling center. This was what was to be...
Get the camera in good on it.
This was what was to be in Shawboro. So I'll let the public decide if this is a junkyard or a recycling center. And this is a recycling center. This is the Shawboro Recycling Center. Folks, you decide if this junkyard is compatible with any neighborhood. Folks, you decide if you think the commissioners need to listen to their own staff and planning board members. Folks, you decide if you think the exact thing could never happen to you, but I will tell you right now that I never thought in a million years that my own county commissioners would do this to me. Folks, you decide if you think no financial response, that no financial responsibility after they have gone against everyone's recommendation, and even after two courts said they were wrong. So commissioners, I've brought something, and Ben, if you would pass that around, I brought each one of you a picture of this, and I'd like for you to tape it on your back door and then come tell the citizens of Currituck County you treated me fairly. Thank you.
Thank you. And of course, we're gonna let Mr. McCree get the facts out again. What you just saw tonight is not what was proposed. This is actually a junkyard. The guy that operates it says it's a junkyard, never said it was anything other than a junkyard, and was nothing that was approved to go in Shawboro.
That's correct.
As a matter of fact, the site in Shawboro right now has truck scales from where that has always traditionally been an industrial use area in there. It has truck scales. It has grain bins. Anybody rides by can see the dilapidated grain bins that are falling down. There used to be a train station there. There's, it's called, what's the name of the road?
Station.
Station Lane, because it's always been traditional. And there was overwhelming support for it when it came forward. But I'll let you, Mr. Petry, and then Mr. McCree, you can go ahead and once again put the facts out for the public.
Well, if I remember right, in Shawboro, there had to be, I think, a 10-foot-high fence that would hide this. Now, in my opinion, I don't know if we can do anything about it, but this should have a 10-foot-high fence. You shouldn't be able to see this from Carrottock Highway, but I know in Shawboro, there's gonna be a 10-foot-high fence. So you wouldn't have seen this, and to me, this needs to be hid. I don't know if we can do anything about it, but it needs to be hid. Thank you.
But that's not what was proposed for Shawboro.
I know, but I know they have fence.
Go ahead, Mr. McCree.
Well, I guess I've explained it in several meetings now. First of all, with regard to the application, that was before the Board of Commissioners in December 2011. It was for a conditional rezoning of the particular piece of property on Station Lane from agricultural to heavy manufacturing that would allow for, in this instance, what was applied for, a recycling center. In fact, during the course of that hearing before the Board of Commissioners, Mr. Woody, the planning director, presented to the board, and indeed, it was from direct questioning from commissioners, that the property was gonna, or the project would be classified as a recycling center because we did not have a specific provision for junkyard, and that's the way it would be classified under the UDO. You classify things to that which it most closely relates to or resembles in the table of permitted uses. As I've noted before, during the commissioners' meeting in response to this, at the Court of Appeals, where this matter was argued in January of this year, the plaintiff's attorney was indeed challenged with regard to the continued assertion that this was a junkyard, challenged by one of the judges on the panel, because we had argued in our brief the same statement I just made, that this was classified and applied for as a recycling center. And upon pointed questioning from one of the judges, the plaintiff's own attorney had to ultimately back up and admit that, no, it was not a junkyard, it was indeed a recycling center that had been applied for. I want to also, I guess, make a distinction, which already has been made by you, Mr. Chairman, with regard to the picture you've just seen and where the applicant of the Station Lane project in 2011 ultimately located the business, that is a non-conforming junkyard. That is a junkyard that's been in existence for a good number of years, and despite amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance that does not allow junkyards, that one is still allowed to continue to operate. That operation there is not the same type of operation that was applied for on Station Lane, nor was that the kind of operation or use that was approved by the Board of Commissioners in December 2011. The other important aspect of that 2011 application, and what the board did with regard to a conditional rezoning, was that you were able, by making it a conditional rezoning, and it being a conditional rezoning application, to put additional terms and conditions on that particular use of the property to protect the neighboring properties from any potential impact that might have resulted from this particular project. I remember, again, the application in this conditional rezoning was for the receipt, the receipt and processing of light and heavy metals to be removed from the site, but also it was to store on the site and distribute from the site landscaping materials such as rock and gravel and others type of landscaping material. You also had imposed upon the permit a condition that there be a fence that you've already noted tonight that would screen the property from adjacent parcels. You also noted, and we've noted a number of times discussing this, that there was indeed support expressed from the community. There is some difference of opinion as to what that means. There is case law that talks about community being county-wide or community-wide application, not just within the particular neighborhood that there be support. But the record that you had before you, you will recall, had a public meeting that's required by your Unified Development Ordinance in that community, in which approximately 18 people, I believe, expressed support for the particular project and application as proposed. I've also noted that you have 30-some members of your technical review committee from different disciplines, from federal, state, and local government agencies, that review each application before or as it makes its way to the planning board and ultimately to this board. There were, as I recall, only several of the 30 that expressed any particular points with regard to the application, but none expressed outright objection to location of this particular, except for maybe one, cultural resources, for the location of this particular project on Station Lane. Ultimately, of course, the courts heard this, as is our form of government. We have checks and balances. This body, seeing as a legislative body, made its decision. Those in opposition to that decision had the opportunity to go to another branch of government, and they did, through the judicial branch. They ultimately partially prevailed in their challenge, and that judicial branch and exercise of its checks and balance in our form of government indeed determined that the zoning action needed to be overturned, and it was. The other piece of that, again, is part of the checks and balances and review from another branch of government, was a claim by the plaintiffs that they should be paid by the county for their attorney fees. There is a statute that was created by the Journal Assembly a couple of years ago that provides that if a board is found to have exceeded its legal authority, the court may, discretionary, the court may award attorney fees. However, if a court finds that a board has abused its discretion, it must award attorney fees. In this case, the trial court, and ultimately, the Court of Appeals, determined that the Board of Commissioners did not abuse its discretion when it made its decision. There may be a difference of opinion on the decision that was made but did not rise to the level of abuse of discretion, and accordingly, the Court of Appeals upheld the trial court's finding that no attorney fees should be awarded to the plaintiffs. As I have stated and explained several times as well at your meetings on this issue, this board then properly, and I think probably constitutionally under the North Carolina Constitution, was required not to pay compensation or attorney fees to the plaintiffs based upon findings of two courts now, that this Board of Commissioners is not required to make payment of attorney fees to the parties in this matter. I'd be glad to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Want to have any questions? All right. We'll move on. Thank you, Mr. McCree. We'll move on to the next speaker. It's Mr. Josh Bass, the Currituck Chamber President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Josh Bass, President of the Currituck Chamber of Commerce. I come before you this evening, for those of you that don't know, a car ran into our building Friday night at about 5:30 and set it on fire. Just wanted to come this evening to thank the county for the response from Fire, EMS, police, sheriff, 911. The response from the county was wonderful. I think we would have lost the whole building if the county services had not acted as quickly. And again, that was all four, you know, 911, sheriff, EMS, and the fire departments from Crawford, Chesapeake, and Moayak, so we greatly appreciate that and that very timely response. Also appreciate the county planning department and building staff for getting our section of the office back in so that we can move back in Monday. I understand that Mr. Newans worked on the weekend and on his own personal time to do that, so I really do appreciate what the county government has done for us. Of course, the support from the community has been incredible. We've had almost 10 businesses offer us office space, which thankfully, we did not need, but some of the other offices did need it. Of course, commissioners also called, y'all called personally over the weekend to check up on us and make sure all the businesses were doing okay. That is greatly appreciated. And of course, we've had just hundreds of phone calls and emails from businesses in support. So thank you for what the county did for us and what the community did as well. Thank you.
I would like to piggyback and say that the fire department responded very quickly. They worked very hard. Sheriff's Department responded, or Building Department responded. Emergency Services, I mean, it was, could have been a lot worse than it was, and they did a wonderful job. I think Crawford helped Moayak, and I know if I start naming people, I'm gonna forget someone, but Chesapeake came down and helped, and they did a wonderful job, and we're all appreciative of everything that happened and everything that everybody did.
Mr. Chairman, if all the things that I've heard are true, they've done a very good job to save what they saved. And I rode by there this afternoon and looked at it, and yeah, they saved a significant portion of that building, and some good thoughts and good tactics caused that to happen.
And I think it's a good segue to talk about the Appreciation Month that's going on for the fire departments, and it's a good time to recruit, and if anybody wants a means to get involved in your community and do something, they are accepting applications. The volunteer fire departments that we have save the citizens of Currituck County millions of dollars of what it would cost to have a paid fire department. Your taxes saves you tremendously on what your taxes would be if we had a paid fire department, so I think that anybody that's got an inclination to get involved in the community, and if you just moved here or been here a while and you really don't know where you could help and benefit, the fire departments are really looking for some people, regardless of what part of the county you live in, so it's a good time to put a little plug in for that.
I know, in conversations with them, they're, all of them are in desperate need of volunteers and assistance, and I'm sure you'd be welcome with open arms if you apply.
And they'll get you trained and outfitted and ready to go. So, thanks again. Moving on to our next agenda item is Mr. Manley West, representing Currituck County Farm Bureau, looking for support for installation of highway safety signage for farm equipment. Mr. West?
Yeah, my name is Manley West. I live at 2658 Carrottock Highway, and as you just stated, the Currituck County Farm Bureau Board of Directors, and let me tell you who they are. Roy Harrison is our president, and Harvey Roberts is our vice president, Ann Smith is our secretary, and we have Finley, Newbern, James Guard, William Powell, and myself. And at one of our recent meetings, we thought it would probably be a good idea with the traffic that goes through 168 in the summertime to have the signage similar to what you have around Edenton that indicates that farm equipment or slow-moving vehicles use this highway as well. Whenever someone's running 60 miles an hour, or maybe the speed limit's 55, but anyway, they're running 60, and they come up on a vehicle that's running anywhere between 15 miles per hour and 25 miles per hour, they come up on it quick. So we felt like that this would be a good thing for the farmers in this community, and not just farmers, but anybody that's on that road with a slow-moving vehicle, construction or whatever. So that's basically what we're asking for.
Well, I know there's a program, I see it when I ride through Edenton and different areas where they put a sign up that shows a tractor to let people know that there's farm equipment using the road. I think it's absolutely appropriate to put it on 158, 168 from Shawboro and from the bridge. I mean, we have farming operations all the way into Moayak, and two years ago, we had a tragic death right down in Lower Currituck where somebody ran into the back of a tractor, and it killed the person.
And there's probably been similar situations that maybe didn't cause an accident, but some close calls. And I know of two or three myself that have had pretty close calls.
Now, is this a North Carolina Department of Transportation program, or is this something the Department of Agriculture, or is it purely done by the county?
That, I'm not sure who does it. It's on DOT right away, so I guess they would have to be involved in it some kind of way, but that's why we were coming to you to...
Let us do the work.
Let y'all do it.
Work it out.
Earn your keep.
Yes, sir.
We need, what, we need a motion?
Yes, sir, to instruct staff to...
Make a motion, instruct staff to look into this deal and do everything we can possibly to do exactly what the gentleman's talking about.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Appreciate it.
We will get staff to check into that and see what we need to do to get those signs up.
All right. On a similar note, this is coming from me personally, this isn't Farm Bureau, but I think it's time that we look at mile post markers in our county. I've lived here all my life, and I still have to stop and think, do I get to Jarvisburg before I get to Harbinger or back and forth, you know? Now, I'm familiar with the northern end, but I'm not familiar with the southern end as much to know. And I can only imagine if someone's coming through our county, say, a young mother or something, and she had a child who got sick, maybe a medical emergency, people are used to mile post markers nearby everywhere they travel, and I think it's time that we look at putting up mile post markers in our county for our people that are traveling through to recognize that.
We've talked about that.
Haven't we looked into that, then?
Yep. And the state, I think the manager says state doesn't support it, but, you know, they've got them all over the interstates, all the way through...
Well, they got them in Chesapeake, you know, when you, you know, they got them everywhere else. They got them in Dare County as well, on 158.
Yep.
Yeah.
Hey, we got it on Highway 12, for Lord's sake.
What would be the difference of Dare County if they can do it on 158 and Currituck, we can't? Who previously looked into that?
I think they DOT supported them back when Dare County put them on, but I don't think DOT supports them now. Is that what it is?
We've made a handful of requests over the last several years to have mile markers installed, but DOT does not sponsor, does not advocate mile markers on the road system.
Do they prohibit?
Can we do it and get permission from DOT, or at least find out?
Can we do it?
Yeah. I mean, DOT is gonna say whether we can do it or not.
How do we do it at Carrick?
Those got put out before...
We can look in, I mean, we certainly can request again.
I would like to see it done.
I'll amend my motion to also add that to the motion that I just presented, that we look into and ask and inquire and come to a final conclusion as to whether we can or if we can or how we can have mile markers installed throughout Currituck.
Make that a new motion, because we already voted on the other one.
Okay, I'll make that a new motion.
I second.
Have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks again.
All right, I'm gonna leave you with one last thought, and then I'm gonna, I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but House Bill 366 and also Senate Bill 387, it's known as the North Carolina Farm Act of 2014. It covers a lot of stuff. It deals with environmental issues, fertilizer regulations, landscape, contractor license, it deals with a lot. But whenever you dig down to Section 11, it deals with ATVs. And the law that was passed on August 6th and signed by the governor states that no person shall operate any motorized all-terrain vehicle on any private property not owned by the operator without the written consent of the owner. They added that word, "written." So I think that's something that our citizens of this county need to know with hunting season and Christmas coming and ATVs. I think the citizens of this county need to know that's the law now, it has to be written consent to ride on somebody else's property.
So, Manley, the change is written?
Yeah, they added the word "written." Okay? Thank you.
Mr. West, before you step away, Mr. West's bride shared with me on Saturday that Manley West was just elected the president of the North Carolina Soil and Water Conservation, and that's oversea in 96 counties, and on January 6th, he'll be sworn as the president. So, I wanna give him a round of applause and thank you for your service and what you're about to do. So, thank you. I'm not sure of the location of where it's gonna be, but I'm gonna try to get there.
It'll be at the Cory Center in Greensboro. I've served as first vice president all this year, and I'll be sworn in as president in January to serve a one-year term, so.
And he has a tremendous amount of knowledge of the soil in Carrottock County, and when I first moved here, I shared that with him, that he's shared his knowledge, and when we had our soil and workshop just last meeting, I heard Manley's voice saying all these things, that the inspectors were talking about the soils, because he's got that knowledge. So again, thank you very much.
Back in, between the years 1979 and 1982, the county spent quite a bit of time and effort on developing a soil map of all the soils in Currituck County, and that book is available at the Soil and Water Conservation Office over at Mike Doxy, and it's also available on the internet. If you go to the, you can bring that up and look at your soil types, and that's been kinda one of my pet things. We need to be looking at soil types sometimes on where we're building and developing property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Derek Kelly, CenturyLink Presentation and Discussion of Current Products, Service, and Future Expansion Plans. And I'll go ahead and let the board know and the public know why I asked this to be put on the agenda and give you a chance to answer from time to time. Y'all send out solicitations to people where they'd like to hook up to CenturyLink's high-speed internet, and then sometimes when you call, you might get, well, it's not available in your area, and so then they call us and say, how come we get it and it's not available? So I thought tonight would be a good night for you to talk about expansion plans. In Currituck County, we have, our school system has Chromebooks that require internet connection for, I believe, our middle school and our high school, and unfortunately, some of those kids have a hard time getting a internet connection because we just don't have it throughout the county, so it could be a good chance for an opportunity for a corporation to expand in the county some. So with that, thanks for coming.
Certainly. Thank you for inviting me. I'm Derek Kelly, I live in Sampson County. I'm the market development manager, sort of handle the PR wing of CenturyLink for the eastern third of the state or so. So I put together a slide, and I didn't quite know what you were gonna ask, so hopefully I'll tackle all those questions, but if I don't, feel free to jump in and just tell me to speed up or whatever. First couple slides, I'm just gonna keep moving quickly, because I think you wanna see some maps and actually get into what's in Carrottock County, but I always like to stop and pause at this slide. It sort of talks about our four segments of customers. Consumers are the easy ones. They're the ones that call you when they get a piece of mail that says they can get service, and they call us, for some reason they can't. Business customers range everything from the building we're standing in to the McDonald's to the Bank of America and the federal government. And the important thing about businesses is, as they continue to grow and we get bigger businesses and we get more property management groups at the beach, they have a real thirst for fiber, and their desire to get more and more bandwidth continues to grow, so as that happens, a lot of times, as we're building out to those businesses, it enables us to pick up pockets of consumer customers... us to pick up pockets of consumer customers that we wouldn't be able to afford otherwise. Um, wholesale, uh, we should all stop and thank the Verizons and the AT&amp;Ts and the Sprints and the US Cellars, because a couple of years ago, when everything started going to threeG and fourG and how many Gs we're gonna get up to, they started requesting us to plow a lot of fiber throughout all of North Carolina, and we hook up a couple hundred more towers, what it seems like, every year. And we do that same thing, where we go and look, okay, what areas can that pick up? So, moving along, just a quick glance in North Carolina, so you can have a comparison, what's in North Carolina and what's in, uh, Currituck County. If you look at our access lines, that bottom number, ninety-six percent of our voice customers can get high-speed internet. That's not necessarily ninety-six percent of the homes within our footprint. We sorta have two measurements, how many of the homes can get it and how many of the access lines. Um, across the state, we have about twenty-three hundred employees, about a hundred and fifty or a hundred and seventy-five of them are in the northeast, um, fifteen or sixteen counties. So, here's the one you really care about. So, property tax in Currituck County, we pay about forty-seven thousand dollars a year. Never mind pointing that out, that we hopefully are a good tax-paying and pay our bill on time. Uh, but if you look at what percent of the lines within Currituck County are access, can get some level of high-speed internet, it's about ninety-two percent. Does that surprise anyone?
Yes.
Okay. It's 'cause that remaining eight percent, they're the ones that come to you guys. The other ninety-two percent, they don't call and say, hey, guess what, I can get CenturyLink, thanks. Uh, so unfortunately, that eight percent, they're a lot more vocal. Uh, if you look at a business perspective, about ninety-six percent of the businesses in the county can get, um, some level of high-speed internet. That number's probably actually a little bit higher, but when we do some of our database marketing stuff, it picks up some home-based businesses, which are equally important, but that sort of skews the numbers when you think of a traditional business in a downtown area or in a Corolla. So, you guys are all staring at this map, and I probably need to do some disclaimer. So, if you can stare in and see those little pink lines, um, that's something we typically don't share, but those are our fiber routes in the county. And you can see there's plenty of pink lines in the county. There's a couple of places that don't have pink lines. So, when we look at what it takes to get high-speed internet into an area, and this map is very, very busy. Do we have the PDF? Can we switch to that, anyone? It's not vitally important, but you can zoom in and, um, Deborah has it if anyone wants to see it. Um, you can go to it. So, in order to get high-speed internet to an area, if you look at a block of homes, we need sort of two things or three things. One, we need a piece of land. Two, we need equipment to sit on that land, and then we have to get fiber optic cabling to it. When we started launching high-speed ten, eleven, twelve years ago, we were running it on copper T1s. Well, everyone's thirst for broadband sorta got over that cap of them, one point five or three meg, so we had to start going and overbuilding ourselves and going, okay, let's go and plow fiber to all these sites. That got us up to about ten meg. And we thought we were good for a little while, and then YouTube and everything else started coming along. And everyone says, well, even ten mgs, that's not enough. So, we have sort of two, um, cars we're chasing. One is, there's that remaining eight percent of the county that can't get high-speed internet. And then the other ninety-two percent, they constantly want more and more and more. Um, so that's another figure we've thrown out there. About thirty percent of the county can get higher than ten meg, which means we had to go and replace all that equipment that was sitting on the land and upgrade that to newer technology and do a bunch of stuff with the lines. So, we've gotten about thirty percent of the county served. Um, that number by next week should be up closer to about forty percent. We're doing some upgrades, um, in the Sligo downtown or Sligo area, as well as, if you can see on the map, there's a SR thirteen forty-seven, which is sort of northwest of Sligo, uh, Talls Creek, which I think is about due north of Sligo, Highway one sixty-eight South Number One, which is on the south side of Sligo. Um, so if you look, there's give or take about fifteen thousand homes in the county. Um, by the time we have all those projects done, we'll have about five thousand of them are capable of getting, um, speeds greater than ten meg. So, if we can rewind, your first question is, why does occasionally someone get a piece of mail they shouldn't? Uh, or they call and says, okay, you can't get service? We send out about twenty million pieces of mail a month, um, across the company, and I'll be the first one to say, yeah, we screw up sometimes, and someone gets a piece of mail. Please send me your address, 'cause I'd like to dig in, 'cause I heard it's just not you, but sort of the whole community around you. You're in Water Lily, is that correct? There's gotta be something on our backend system that's triggering it, 'cause when you actually pull up the addresses, it clearly shows services aren't available. If it was a one-off, um, time, but if it's happening multiple times, there's gotta be something in our backend. So, I'd be glad to take a couple of examples and figure out why that's happening. What were your other questions? We talked about future stuff, it's sort of going in over, um-
Expansion, when, when we put the natural gas lines in Currituck County and, and throughout the northeast or bond issue, we laid conduit next to the natural gas lines for fiber. Are y'all able to access any of that, or are you having to just bury it and, and parallel to it?
I think everywhere, are you talking about the APEC?
Yes.
Everywhere, I believe we actually took over ownership of that at some point, but everywhere that that ran through the county, we already have fiber overbuilt over top of that. And if you look at the PDF, you can actually zoom in and see around, we have fiber going on pretty much all the main routes. Now, if you get up in the, um, where Idlet, up to Water Lily, we don't have fiber up there. And I know, um, Gibbs Woods is sort of another hot button. We don't have fiber going to there, uh, just 'cause some of the uniqueness of having to go up into Virginia and around. But I'm gonna talk about Gibbs Woods in a second.
Could I ask a question or make a comment?
Sure.
It was some years back, so I don't know how relevant it is now, but I was one of those ones, I, I called in to see if I could get high-speed internet. And I, I believe at the time, the entity with CenturyLink that was handling that call was doing business out of, I think it was Texas, and they said, no. Your, your area, they, they ran my telephone number and said, no, you're, you, you can't get it. I went next door to my neighbor sometime later, and he had. He was there on his internet, and I said, oh, well, you gotta dial up or, or HughesNet. And he says, no, I got CenturyLink high. And I said, really? Next-door neighbor. So, what happened, it prompted me to go locally and actually flag someone down. And, in fact, I could get it. And I called back the service or telephone center, and I think it was out of Texas at the time, it's been some years back, and advised them that whatever map or whatever criteria they were utilizing was, at least in my case, not accurate. So, I would suggest anybody that's, I, I don't, I don't know what your logistics are now for fielding those calls, but I know at the time I was told I couldn't get it, when actually my next-door neighbor had it, and I got it just like that, once I flagged down somebody locally and they looked at it.
Yeah, from time to time, and that's why we like this sort of local operating model, where I'm here, Fred and Derek Caldwell, they're behind me, they're here and they're local. We have technicians that are driving around in our vans. Keeping records straight for thirty or forty million houses across the country is nearly impossible. We do a pretty good job of, but from time to time, it's not that our records may be wrong, it may be that there may be some type of workaround that when we get someone to actually look at a single address and go, okay, yeah, they can't get service there, but can we feed the cable from another device? And sometimes when you get down to local level, we can do some creative things like that, that sort of change the, um, the answer from no to yes.
On, on this chart, uh, can you describe, like, what does the green mean? The high, in other words, is there a correlation between, for example, your ten-meg lines and anything on that chart?
So, the, um, I made this map on a quick request, I think Friday afternoon sometime, and the person that does my map, she was off, um, most of today, so I didn't have time to get her to redo it. Green is supposed to show where we're served and the white is unserved. It's a little incorrect, um, because, can't really see it. So, if you look at the white area, it's sort of at the tip of the gray box. That area there is actually served, it just, we don't have a piece of equipment that's sitting there that's served, that are actually served by some of the green areas beside it. That's the case for most of the white areas, except for when you get up to the, um, the Idlet, Water Lily, sort of peninsula, and then Gibbs Woods. And then, within each green area, so we have a piece of equipment sitting there, and then there's cable going out to each house. The signal goes out, um, for the furthest we can reach, someone's about twenty-five thousand feet, so a little short of five miles. To get a three or five or eight or ten meg, the distance is gonna be a little shorter than that. So, even within a green block, you may have someone that's at the outer limits of that, that they may have slower speeds, or there could be a one, one person here or there that can't get service. That answer your question? So, if I can quickly talk, excuse me. The FCC started a new program called the Connect America Fund about two years ago. They're basically transitioning money, it used to be the Universal Service Fund, that was going to provide phone service to every nook and cranny across the US, and they're gearing that towards broadband. The, um, the first round that went out, I think it was sometime in twenty-twelve, um, they put some rules in place. I think they were a little conservative, 'cause they just weren't sure how big or small the pie could be. So, I think they really tried to rein in and just find some pockets and see how the program will work. Uh, for North Carolina, we accepted somewhere around nine hundred thousand dollars. And basically, the way the program works is, um, they look at a census block data and find out where is served. So, if there's one house within a census block that us, MediaCom, Charter, any other provider out there serves, that whole census block gets qualified as a served, uh, census block. So, you really had to look across North Carolina to find where there's a whole census block where there's not one single house in it that doesn't have service. Um, so we accepted about nine hundred thousand dollars, and that was supposed to be, or that was matched by at least nine hundred thousand dollars of our money. It was at a minimum of one-to-one, uh, but I think we ended up spending slightly more than that. That picked up about thirteen hundred homes across the state, so it wasn't a huge, huge impact. That was CAF Round One, Phase One. Right behind it, um, about a year ago, we had, probably nine months ago or so, we accept, we announced that we were gonna accept a couple million dollars more in North Carolina as part of CAF Round One, Phase Two. And then right behind that, the FCC started putting out some, uh, preliminary rules around Connect America Fund Round Two. So, we sort of put the brakes on the, on the Round One, Phase Two, because if there's any sites that are gonna get picked up by the second round, we'd rather them get picked up by that, 'cause the funding model has changed. That allows us to actually put some higher speeds into those areas when they do get picked up. So, this is a map of Currituck County where we, um, think we can get funding for CAF Round, or Connect America Fund Round Two or Phase Two. Um, Gibbs Woods is that top green blotch that you see, that meets the funding criteria. And then there's sort of a horseshoe that's around Shawboro on the right side and the left side, and it connecting, it's a blue splotch. Um, part of the, the whole funding model is we go and submit, okay, we're gonna pick up these census blocks with the dollars. It goes, then goes, um, through a competitive review process where all of our competitors can say whether or not they serve those census blocks. So, that's what those two or three blue blotches you see are, is a competitor said, no, we serve there, but we've done our homework and said, we don't think they're there. Um, so what we're asking the FCC is, there needs to be someone that actually goes and validates this information, 'cause right now they just take hearsay. If MediaCom or Charter were to say, oh, well, we serve every one of those green areas, it would basically restrict us from getting money, whether or not they serve or not. Um, so one of the things we're asking, uh, county commissioners, elected officials, chambers of commerce, economic developers, um, I attached a letter and I have paper copies as well, that we'd ask support, um, from the Board of Commissioners to write a letter, whether on an individual basis or as a board. There's a couple of changes that we're requesting. Um, one is that review, that anything a competitor says actually gets reviewed and authenticated. Um, two is they want, um, everything to be built out within five years. And the initial goal of this is, every state that we accept money, we have to pick on a state-by-state basis whether or not we're gonna accept the dollars or not. But if we accept it, it's accepted on a statewide level, and with, right now, they wanna do five years to build it out. Um, but the goal is to get to a hundred percent coverage across the state for all of our service areas. Just 'cause some of the uniquenesses of the geography, North Carolina, especially when you get up along all the bodies of water, a hundred percent build-out, one, is gonna take a while, and two, is gonna be really uneconomical. There's always gonna be a time where a boundary ends up against a body of water and there's one house sitting there. And the only way for us to serve that is to plow fiber pretty much to that person's house and plop in a carrier and spend, you know, sometimes three, four hundred thousand dollars to pick up one house. If it was your business, you wouldn't do it, and no one in their right mind would. So, one, we don't think the goal should be a hundred percent, maybe it's ninety-nine dot something. Um, there needs to be some opportunity that there's gonna be those unique cases where we may not get to exactly a hundred percent. I think that was it, that was our three or four bullet points.
Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
As a public utility, are you not guaranteed a certain return on the investment?
No.
I know that the power companies are, uh, guaranteed a certain return.
No, we're not a monopoly and we're not a, uh, we're actually a deregulated company. Now, we still have a little bit of regulation, um, but for the most part, we're actually a deregulated business, especially on the internet side. That's never been regulated.
Okay, so, as I look at your new map up there, it looks like Knott's Island is left off too. You didn't mention Knott's Island?
Knott's Island is by Verizon is the provider there.
Verizon?
I was gonna, I was gonna get into, I've got some questions for him myself, so.
Okay, but looking at your map here, Idlet and Water Lily still get left out with your expansion plan?
And the reason that is, I said that, um, basically, and they go off the NC broadband map. Uh, there's an entity in every state that's, uh, set up to do the mapping service. For us, it's under the Department of Commerce. If you search for NC broadband map in North Carolina, it'll come right up. And if you go to that area, it's all showing served as, um, by MediaCom, so we can't even apply for funds because it's served.
It's available?
It shows served.
We're saying the same thing, but it has two different meanings. Okay.
But I checked on that before I came, 'cause I was wondering that same question.
Okay, yes, sir.
Yeah, Knott's Island is serviced by Verizon. It's the only community in the state of North Carolina, as I understand it, that Verizon provides phone service to. What a mess. Uh, I don't know why it is that way, don't have a clue, but, uh, you would not believe the time that we spend trying to keep-
You're down all the time.
-Verizon service and your service. For me to call the courthouse, sometimes I have to smoke, send smoke signals from Knott's Island. And it's, it's, it's bad. My, it leads to my question, I've had numerous phone calls from folks at Gibbs Woods. They have Cox cable over there, which really does not provide any service to make anything, uh, because of numbers of houses on routes. As I understand, I, for some reason, I thought Verizon serviced them with the phones. Obviously, I was wrong. You guys do that? What is the, what is your percentage of connectivity for internet connections in Gibbs, in the Gibbs Woods community?
Zero. Right now, we don't have internet service. We only have phone service.
Leads to my next point then. I've asked the county manager to, a, a week or so, to go to prepare a letter and to dress down Cox and find out why we cannot get something there. We've got kids there that go to school. The Chromebooks, as you're saying, kids are having to do homework and can't do it because there's no internet connectivity for, for lord's sakes.
Right.
And, uh, so, we don't have it from the phone service, we don't have it from the cable service, so we have none. And it's a big deal. And, uh, I, I would just like for y'all to support me, and, and if we have to have Cox in here to do the same thing, well, please invite him, and I'll be glad to lead that discussion. And, uh, have we prepared that? Is it?
We're currently working with the Board of Education to get the information, send that letter out.
Good, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Well, as far as Gibbs Woods, it's, it's a unique scenario, and I think both Knott's Island and Gibbs Woods goes back to when Norfolk Telephone United had both areas, and somewhere along the line with GTE and Caroline Telephone. one went to Verizon or GTE and one came down to us. But for us to service Gibbs Woods right now, we actually lease some lines from another phone company that's on the Virginia side of the line to serve down there. But as part of this Connect America Fund, if we can get the changes that we're requesting on this letter, I think we'll end up picking up Gibbs Woods and being able to plow fiber up into Virginia and come back down into Gibbs Woods and serve the area.
So what type of a timeframe, if you had to guess, are we talking about for something like that to happen?
It's going to be springtime before the FCC even says what the final rules are going to be for the second round. That's what we're asking for a 10-year buildout. Usually, once we get money that's coming in the form of a grant, we do it as quick as can be.
10-year, 10-year buildout, you said?
With that first round, it was a three-year buildout and we had everything done within 12 months.
Okay, and?
So when money's on the table, we try to do it as quick as possible because sometimes, as you know, that money may not actually be there in seven or eight years.
Best guess, though, for, for the Gibbs Woods community, if you had to guess, I mean, what, what type of timeframe would you be looking at if the stars align and everything falls in place?
I'll give you, I'll give you the very earliest I think anything could happen would be 12 months from now.
Okay, well, that's, that's good. I mean, yeah.
That's at the very earliest. I'm not putting an end date on that.
Okay.
Because I think it's about 12 or 13 miles worth of fiber we have to build. And they're going right for fibers about $30,000 a mile. So you can do the math in your head. Just to put the fibers, about $360,000.
Well, I'm sure the community would be glad to know that at least it's being looked into. Thank you.
I'll ask one last question. We've solved Gibbs Woods. Water Lily and Idlet, we still haven't touched. We have been told, different ones have been told, if we got a petition and the people that signed it were willing to sign up, y'all would look at that. What, what will it take? Tonight, you haven't told me how it's going to happen. So I'm asking you, what will it take to get high-speed internet in Idlet and, and Churches Island?
So we haven't been able to make the economics work. I'll answer your first question. Petition, petitions don't, I'll say they don't help, but try not to say it to be so callous. But they don't do anything. We don't know. We know where the houses are. We know how many houses are in each one of those blocks. We have access to all the 911 database and that type of stuff. So we know how many houses there are. Basically, when we look to an area, it's very simple math. What's it take us to serve that area? And then based on our take rates for all the areas around it and economic conditions, and they take our local input. If we go, you know what, MediaCom's not there, or no one's there. We look at all those things. You know, can we make a dollar back in a reasonable amount of time? A petition doesn't change that cost model at all, unfortunately. Now, something the General Assembly did pass, I think a year or so ago, is there is an option for the county to provide broadband grants that are competitive bid process to pick up unserved areas of the county and say, you know, we're going to offer $100,000 and have all the competitors bid to see what areas could be picked up. So that is an option for counties to do. Most counties that come and talk to don't have tons and tons of resources, but they, they did put that into a law a year or two ago.
Yes, sir.
I want to make sure that I understood you, your last statement. You have to look at the numbers to see if they work. In this case, Knott's Island, Churches Island. Is that right?
Knott's Island will
Okay, we'll take Knott's Island. No, don't take this.
That's Verizon's.
Okay, but we'll take Churches Island. You're saying that if the numbers don't work with the number of people on Churches Island, then it's not cost-effective to provide service. Is that right?
Correct. And that's an ever-changing model. The equipment that we put in those boxes changes every single year. So it's something we're constantly evaluating. The price of fiber continues to go down as the years go on. The technology we use changes. We get something like cell phone towers. They pop up and they want service. So there's, it's not a, a no doesn't mean no forever. Every one of those sites was probably, on that map, was probably a no at some point in time. And as costing models continue to change and evolve, and then things like the Connect America Fund come up, which won't impact that Water Lily and a little bit south of there, just because they go off that broadband map and MediaCom has that checked off as served.
I want, I want to ask you a question. You know, and I'm old and I've been out of marketing for a number of years. But it used to be, you take the good with the bad. You look at Currituck County as a whole. If you start singling out one small area, oh, it doesn't, it doesn't, no, that one doesn't fit. How many, how many connections do you have in Currituck County?
Off the top of my head, I don't know.
Ballpark.
It's like five or 6,000.
Okay, so tell me why the 5,000 or 6,000 people that are already connected, that you're making a profit off of, can't be factored in to providing service to Churches Island? If you start singling out in Pigeon Hole, one particular area, you got to look at Currituck County as a whole and say, is it worth it, in my opinion? Because right now, in my opinion, what you're doing, you're taking the good and you're leaving the bad. Nah, I don't need you. Well, I'll tell you what, one of these days, one of these days, it might not happen. You might have a competitor. I bet you by God, you jump out there then.
We do have a competitor in that area.
I'm sorry?
We do have a competitor. Are we talking about Water Lily still?
All I'm saying is this. Okay, all I'm saying is when you start taking the good and you're leaving the bad out there, there's 26,000 people living in this county. And we're all a family. We're all tied together. And you start singling somebody out and you're making all this over here, and I, I, I mean, I use you. But I'm just saying, marketing model to me, mm-mm, doesn't work. It's not fair.
Well, and I don't want you to think that we sit there and go, okay, we're sort of a Scrooge McDuck-type model that we're trying to figure out, you know, who we're going to help and who we're going to leave in the dark ages type thing, but
I'm, I'm using your words. That's what, that's the impression that I got.
No, we're constantly running economic models. I think our shareholders, our customers, everyone would rather us make money. If we were to go today and say, you know what, we're going to serve 100% of our customers across the company, all of a sudden, you'd see CenturyLink filing for bankruptcy. Because unfortunately, no one has an unlimited pocketbook. There's not a Verizon, an AT&amp;T, a MediaCom. No one's going to say, okay, I'm going to, tomorrow, I'm going to serve 100% of the United States or 100% of my service area. We'd go bankrupt.
Nobody bets a thousand, but you know what? Currituck County's tied together.
Understood.
And you know what? It's a small community. And I'll tell you what, to me, I would be looking to find a way to serve Churches Island.
And I represent 36
And Idlet.
And Idlet, and suck it up. I mean, that's
And unfortunately, I mean, I have 36 counties across the state. We're in 67 counties. You know, rewind 12 years ago, the score was 0% had HSI, 100% didn't. We've tipped the scales to 96%. You know, I think we're doing a pretty good job. Currituck County, you know, go out to a Northampton County where that number's, you know, 85%, which I still think's an impressive number with the amount of landmass in that county. You know, Chawan County, if you rewind to 2008, was at about 50%. We've gotten it up to 89. So it's not that we're trying to single someone out or that we're not investing money. We invest in millions and millions every single year.
Well, I know you've got a CenturyLink person that lives in the county. And I know across the causeway is what, two, three miles?
Yeah.
Okay, so you've got to go across a causeway to get out there. But still, because those people choose to live there and you're, you're operating in Currituck County, you just can't say, oh, well, I'm not going to run it out there for two or three miles. Because if that's what you're waiting on, it'll never happen. You can't make it work just to cover that. But I'm just saying, to me, marketing 101, you look at the whole county and you take the good with the bad. And I'll close. Thank you.
Well, and to me, my priority would, you know, if it was my pocketbook to spend, I'd want to hit those areas that are green right now because that means MediaCom's not there. So, you know, ultimately, it's not my decision. But I'd rather tackle Gibbs Woods where a MediaCom isn't than to try going and overbuilding where a competitor's already there.
I, I thought there was much more unserved areas of the county. And, and that's why I wanted you to, to come tonight, because I had heard from people throughout the county. And I thought it was just a few places in the county were served. But you have put a map up that shows otherwise. So I appreciate that. Does anyone else have anything else?
Just one question, minor question. I looked down at your map. You got Point Harbor One and Point Harbor Two. It looks like you have, what are those connection? Is that your equipment? And if so, why do you have two so close in that area? I'm just curious. That's, I live in that area. Right at the very bottom, right there near the bridge. It says Point Harbor One, Point Harbor Two. What do they, what do they represent?
Those are actual piece of equipment, those boxes that you see sitting off the side of the road. So without going back to our engineers as to why there's two of them, it could be that there was enough working out of that device that it constituted putting in a separate one.
Okay, that's all.
All right, anyone else? We do appreciate your time. I know that you traveled a long ways to get here tonight. And you've been quite informative and I thank you.
Thank you. And my contact information, Deborah has it. It's on the Chamber's website. If you ever need to reach me, feel free to call me, email me, whatever. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Next item is planning department presentation and discussion of Moyoc Waste Water and Small Area Plan. Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to do a presentation that has a lot of slides and a lot of maps, but I'm going to go through them quickly to not belabor this. But what I'm going to do is, at the request of the board, is spend a little bit of time talking about really development density. And this is part of a work session that staff did for the Board of Commissioners several weeks ago. So we're, we're covering part of this for the benefit of the public. So stop me anytime if you have questions. So what I'm going to do tonight is talk about the role of the Land Use Plan and the Small Area Plan. And this is really in the context of how staff brings forward recommendations and development applications to the Board of Commissioners. The Land Use Plan is effectively the policy document that says, this is how Currituck County will look in the future. It creates a vision. So it's a future, futuristic document in terms of it setting out what the county will evolve into as we move forward. We're going to talk about zoning tools. This board knows very well that your toolbox is your zoning ordinance. And that's how you manage development in the present. So again, your Land Use Plan is the future. Your zoning ordinance is the present. Basically, how you're implementing your, your vision in your Land Use Plan. And finally, I'm going to talk about development density specifically, which is kind of the physical outcome of all this. And maybe bring some understanding to what that is. So let's get into it. Role, the role of the Land Use Plan and the Small Area Plan. There are four land use categories in Currituck County that we generally use. Conservation, rural, limited service, and full service. And you hear me say these every meeting multiple times. Sometimes I probably say it so much it becomes redundant. But the, these are terms that we use every meeting. And these terms impact the applications you see before you every two weeks. So a lot of these applications that come are filed in accordance with these land use categories. There's a lot of things in the Land Use Plan. There's a lot of policies. There's a lot of statements. But it's not just a map. So we sometimes we get too focused in these maps. These are future land use maps. These kind of indicate that future vision. This is what the county should look like 10, 15, 20 years. On the right, you see the countywide future land use map that was adopted in 2006. That map's been in place for eight years with those terms that I'm going to cover in a second. And on the lower left, you see the Moyoc Small Area Plan, which are, is our most recent planning effort. So let's talk about it real quick. Let's get into it. So the Land Use Plan and the Small Area Plans have four land use categories. Full service, limited service, rural, conservation. Full service is, is a land use category to provide from medium to high-density residential development, commercial uses, and areas where a broad range of infrastructure and services have occurred, investments have occurred, or that type of infrastructure is available. So full service is where you see, when you have full service, you're going to see higher density development for Currituck County. And you can see, we've outlined the density on the table and the types of utilities that are available. Usually, full service areas have better soils. They're closer to county facilities such as schools, libraries, EMS service. So they're, they're areas where the county can manage development better and do so in a way that keeps county costs down, lower, more efficient. Going back to the map, you see Moyoc, there's a core of orange in the middle of that. But if you look at the county map, if you notice, there's a little, there's nodes of orange. Those are little areas of full, so those are areas of the county's designated for growth where you'll see more intense growth. Notice the nodes, or it doesn't spread all the way down the corridor. It's real focused. It's done so in a manner that promotes efficiency. I think sometimes it probably feels like the whole county is designated full service when in fact, 11% of the total land area in Currituck County is designated full service. So 89% of the county is not full service.
Say, say that again.
11% of the land area in Currituck County is designated as full service. Those are the areas you'll see higher density development. 89% of the county is not designated full service.
11%.
11%. And that's, and that's interesting. It just worked out this way. The Moyoc Small Area Plan is also 11% full service.
But this is an existing number?
This is what we have mapped, yes.
Does exist?
Yes. Limited service is kind of the next tier down. Limited service, you have limited county services. These are areas that are, don't have sewer or have very limited sewer. They probably have county water. But you're going to see kind of your medium, low to medium density subdivisions, a little bit of commercial. 16% of the county is designated limited service. 16% of the Moyoc Small Area Plan is designated limited service. Rural, rural, the areas of the county, that's what we think. And when you move to Currituck County, you think, I want to live in a rural area. By the Land Use Plan, how we define rural is areas that provide for the protection of agricultural activities and have limited development potential. So these are the prime farm land areas, agricultural areas, where you see, where Mr. West, one of the tractor signs put up. Those are the rural areas. Rural constitutes 24% of the county's land area. And the Moyoc Small Area Plan, when we have a lot of rural area in Moyoc, it constitutes 34% of that area. And rural, you're going to have on-site, you may have some, you may have, you probably have wells most likely. And you're probably going to have on-site septic systems and very little county services. So if you live, if you happen to live in a rural area, it's probably low density. And you probably got a, a pretty good drive to get to anything, really. And the last category we have in Currituck County is conservation. Conservation are basically areas that have significant environmental and cultural resources and really aren't developable. Those are swamp, wetlands, maritime forests. And conservation actually represents our largest category, which is 49% of the county and 39% of the Moyoc Small Area Plan. So again, the majority of the land area in Currituck County is actually designated conservation. Let's do some pictures real quick. Conservation, you're going to see park uses. Again, a majority of county is this category. And again, when I say conservation, I mean future. This is the future land use map. This is kind of looking forward. You do see some recreation and conservation, maybe an ecotourism operation, maybe a boardwalk, a pier, or something of that nature. You move into rural areas, you obviously have agricultural, but you do have some residential. You'll have some farmhouse or homesteads in rural areas, maybe some 10-acre lots, cluster development. But you still have a lot of open space, a lot of open area. You can see a little bit of rural, a little bit of commercial in rural areas. Morris Farm Market's probably not the best example. But the idea is, when you do have commercial in rural areas, it's kind of agriculturally based or tied to that tradition. Kind of small in nature. So moving up, we get into limited service. These are the neighborhoods, the areas where you see, kind of on the fringes of the core. So if you had downtown Moyoc or downtown Grandy, so to speak, limited services are the areas that are kind of around those in the fringes. Don't have all the services, but you're still seeing development pressure. Again, this is about 16% of the county. And you start to see one acre to one and a half, one acre lots to one and one and a half unit per acre type density. You begin to see some commercial, limited service. Usually, the commercial is going to kind of maintain that residential field because it's in close proximity to residential areas. And you begin to see a little bit of industrial. So now we get in our limited service areas, the county's saying, yes, we have water. We have fire suppression available. We have close proximity to services. So we start to have some industrial and job-creating uses. Then you move into full service. And this is what we talk about a lot. And this is where, in full service areas, the densities in the Land Use Plan are from two to four units per acre. I'm going to talk about how you measure density in a second. But you're going to see smaller lot development. You're going to see smaller houses, attached housing, duplexes. These are areas that the county is best equipped to provide with services. You're going to see just a denser development pattern based on the Land Use Plan. You start to see bigger commercial, broader commercial investment. You know, these are things that, while they look nice, you may not put them right beside a house. You're starting to have some compatibility issues. And you'll see these on the corridor a lot of times in our commercial centers. Industrial, you get, you get more intense industrial uses in full service. These are areas that occupy more land, more job creation. These are things that, that, again, you're not going to see in these rural areas. So that's the summary. That's the Land Use Plan. What we just went through is how staff, and I'll tell you, these pictures I just showed to the board and to the public, these are the same, more or less the same pictures we use for every meeting we go to. Because we always find it better to describe these Land Use Plan classifications. And pictures tend to do a little better than words do. So we, we recycle the same pictures over and over. And the staff recommendations, I think you'll see reflect these pictures generally as well, based on the Land Use Plan. So let's talk about the zoning tools. So we got a plan that, that tells us the future, how we're moving forward. You got to have a zoning ordinance to implement that. The zoning, so the plan is like your blueprints. The zoning ordinance is like your toolbox. Zoning, at a basic level, is protect the public health, safety, and welfare. It implements plans. I'm not going to read all these. It improves quality of life. And actually, one purpose of zoning is to conserve and increase the value of buildings and land. You want, you want to have higher, higher quality development and investment in your community. Zoning is a tool of the elected board. It's intended to be flexible. And we, we try, the staff tries to apply it that way. Of course, it's only effective when it implements a clear vision from the community or the elected board. Sometimes zoning, and beyond that, we use it, it can be used in design. A lot of times, you have a development that may in fact meet the density of full service or limited service. But there may be neighbors or adjoining properties that aren't as dense or maybe aren't compatible. So you try to use your zoning to have landscaping and buffering transitions, how you locate the open space, where you place the houses. A lot of times in these site plans, the staff does try to work with the applicants to make sure that, even though the plan is consistent with the ordinance and the Land Use Plan, we try to make sure we're promoting portions of zoning that help these applications be compatible with surrounding. Now, sometimes we're not, and sometimes the board denies those. But certainly, we try to work through those compatibility issues. So kind of like the Land Use Plan, I went through a handful So, kind of like the land use plan, I went through a handful of land use plan classifications. Well, zoning districts are based on the land use plan. Remember, the zoning is how you implement your plans. This isn't all the zoning districts we have in Currituck, but this is just a sampling. We have zoning districts that within the UDO, the density that's allowed in those zoning districts corresponds directly to the land use plan. So if your property's on single-family mainland, and you want to build a subdivision, staff's going to pull up the land use plan. If the land use plan says it's full service in one of these areas where the county can accommodate growth, we're going to recommend in favor of a higher-density approval because it's consistent with the plan and the ordinance. If we pull up the land use plan and it's limited service, then the staff's going to recommend a lower-density-type subdivision request. So the zoning districts actually match or correspond to the land use plan.
Mr. Woody. How did we get the land use plan? Is that something that you and your staff just sat around one day and said, "Here's the land use plan"?
No, it was, well, it's required by the state of North Carolina, first of all, and it's been that way since 1976, I believe. And the most recent version, it's community-driven. I mean, we go out, have public meetings. I think for the land use plan, there was, the East Carolina University did a phone survey. There was 20-something public meetings, maybe 30. So there's a significant amount. It takes three or four years to do these plans.
Was there not an advisory board that was put together to do that, be a part of that as well?
There was. There was a steering committee for the land use plan, and I want to say that steering committee was particularly autonomous, and they did a lot of the work themselves. And usually, in the small area plans, we put together steering committees as well.
Mr. Woody. This is not the first time you've heard this from me, so don't act surprised, okay? We have a lot of conversations about soil type. At some point in time, and there's a new test that I think the contractors have to do with this type of soil, and it's like a moisture test, whatever. So we're starting to see soil type used more and more in the building industry. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. At some point in time, I think we need to amend the Moayok Small Area Plan, in my personal opinion, to take soil type into consideration, because we all know that there's stormwater issues. Now, we're starting to worry about how much moisture is in the ground as far as, I think the test is $5,000 or whatever, for something like that. So soil type is starting to play a bigger and bigger role, especially in Moayok area. Do you see at some point in time soil type will be part of the equation to determine density?
It can, and I will say that on the land use plan, part of determining full-service areas, it does incorporate soil type into it. That is part of the rationale you use to set aside areas that are more appropriate for development. It's not integrated into our UDO, though. I mean, the soil type is basically something that's done to create these land use plans, but there's nothing in our UDO that dictates anything according to soil type.
But we could add it to the UDO.
You could. I mean, the board can amend the land use plan or the UDO.
Would that not require downzoning a tremendous amount of property?
It could. I mean, if there's, I mean, that's something you'd have to consider in doing that.
Yeah, but maybe not downzoning existing property, but keep zoning that's coming before us at a later date. That's, I just see, you know, soil type being bigger, you know, a bigger piece of the puzzle. Thank you.
So you have a land use plan, you have zoning, and all this comes to the bottom line is development density. And I'm just going to go through a quick scenario about the thought process behind subdivisions, at least in our current ordinance and our land use plan. So you've got two subdivisions here. Option, and the board knows the answer to this, so you obviously don't have to answer it, it's more for the benefit of the public, but option A and option B. And so the question is...
Which is options?
The question is, which subdivision is more dense?
Do you mean dense as having more lots?
Yeah, let's start with that. Currituck County measures density as a gross density. So in Currituck County, I calculate density using the ordinance by taking the total track of land and multiplying that by the density factor. So for example, if you're full service, you get three units per acre, I do three times the total track of land. If it's 100 acres, it's three times 100. But I think a lot of times, density is considered to be lot size, which is actually not. Lot size is different than density. So, a little closer, option A is 35 lots. That's more of a conventional subdivision, no open space, essentially one-acre lots. Option B is probably more of the subdivision you see recently in Currituck County. Option B is actually 34 lots, so it's actually one lot less. But what you see is the lots are clustered down, and you have pockets of open space that are integrated into the subdivision design. So in terms of density, from the staff's perspective and applying our ordinance, those are the, actually, B is a little bit less dense. So it kind of depends on how you look at density, but by definition, B is less dense.
Which one's more rural?
I mean, staff, I would say B, because if you're driving down the road, you just see houses upon houses on this one. If you're from the road, if you look at the road views, you mostly just see undeveloped land or buffering. I think it's, it obscures the development.
Couple of weeks ago, I brought this example up, and we talked about wastewater being provided and density, lot size, things like this. The example I gave was G's group. Prior to hooking up this to sewer, what was the plan for G's group? How many lots?
Probably 40, 40s, low 40s.
Okay. After wastewater, how many lots?
Mid 70s.
Explain to me, with your A and your B, how B with 70-some lots is not, is compared to 40-some lots.
It's all contextual. So G's group is an example where you have a high percentage of wetlands on the property. So when you have wetlands or undevelopable land, that is going to decrease your yield without something such as, it could be central sewer, it could be engineered wastewater systems on each individual lot. So you need other means, particularly when there's not great soils, to reduce a lot size.
Okay.
There are instances where land constraints are going to mean that the introduction of wastewater can get you more lots.
Okay, I'm going to go to Chairman O'Neill's question I just asked, or he just asked. If you drove down G's group, example A, you got 40-some lots, then you drive down G's group, example B, 70-some lots, what do you think's going to look more rural?
Am I driving down single-landing road? I think you can make 70-something lots look more rural. I think it's really about subdivision design. Now, if you're riding from the road, it depends, I'll show you an example, I can go through an example of that very scenario. If you don't see the house from the road, what makes it unrural? That's what I would proposition. If you can't see the houses...
Again, it goes back to, what's rural? I mean, I think having open spaces in a subdivision looks more rural than having a cookie-cutter subdivision where you use every square inch of land and the lots.
How much open space is in G's group at 70-some lots?
Probably about 40%.
Okay, how much open space was in G's group with 40-some lots?
Probably a little more than that, 45 or 50 is a little more.
So you're saying the open space is the same?
It's effectively the same. There's a little more open space for the original lot plan. Just let me continue. Walk through River's Edge. River's Edge is a subdivision everybody knows in Currituck County. This is the property, this is the map. On the left side of the map, you see Tolles Creek Road. On the right side of the map, you see the Currituck Sound. This is the original plan for River's Edge. It's 122 lots, about an acre in size. There's no, you can see, and again, there's no common access to the water. You've even got probably eight or nine lots that have direct curb cuts onto Tolles Creek This was a yield plan. This was done originally as a one-acre version. They came in, the developer did, and the applicant, working with staff, the ordinance triggered some of this in the old Currituck County UDO to an open-space subdivision. That's 128 lots, so that is six more lots. But you can see there's common access to the water. Lots are about 18,000 square feet in River's Edge. There's buffers between adjoining properties, there's open space, it incorporates walking trails. Now, if I had to say one criticism of River's Edge, they probably should have done reforestation on some of their open space to cut down on some of the maintenance. But the key to my opinion in terms of rural, if you look at a map, this is what you see, but if you're driving on Tolles Creek Road, I just think this is less impactful from that perspective, and it's a very similar density.
All right, I want to ask you a question. When you have open space on either side, and you talked about compatibility, and I'm beating this horse, you talked about originally compatibility would be the interior lots would be smaller and the exterior perimeter would be larger.
I think that can be a tool, yes.
Okay. Now, when you have the first ink spot on a blotter that I used a couple of weeks ago, and you have open space on either side, what is there? Now, you've got all 10,000 square foot lots. What is there, there's now, it doesn't have to be compatible with anything, because from then on, it's 10,000 square foot lots because it's compatible. Do you, am I explaining that right?
Yeah, but I would say it's compatible with the adopted land use plan, the densities in that. So if that's the concern, then I think the problem is the plans and ordinances that are in place.
Did I explain that right? Evidently, I didn't.
I don't know.
It's just when you have an open field on either side of it, I just, I'm having a hard time for it to be incompatible. It's not, you know, God, it's tough being old, you know? But I just, there's nothing to compare it to. It's open space, and when you start building houses, hey, all I got to do is match this. Do I miss something? I guess so.
And essentially, I would say, and again, as your planning staff, I think integrating open space into subdivisions can make a better design and overall a better subdivision. In terms of density levels, the planning staff is recommending densities that are outlined in the land use plan. The land use plan was adopted before I was even the planning director in Currituck County. That's the tool we use, and that's why you see the recommendations you see. And it just depends, I mean, my opinion in terms of rural character and density, it's much about, there's a bottom-line density in our plans and ordinances, but there's also a design component and how you lay out a subdivision that matters, too. And that's what your staff tries to look at when they bring forward subdivision applications.
If I remember correctly, when River's Edge was done, Currituck County got numerous recognitions throughout the state for the design work that was done on the change to the UDO, if I remember correctly. Is that not true, Dan?
That is correct.
Because it was innovative, and it was creating more open space that was usable for communities, for parks, for recreation, to kids. It's not like when I grew up in Currituck. You could go outside and play football in the field next to you because there was nothing there. Now, there's houses, there's people farming and different things going on, you can't do that. What those subdivisions do is create an area, an open area, where the kids can go and play, the adults can go out there and throw a ball with their kids or whatever, and it just creates more space and a more rural atmosphere than that cookie-cutter subdivision. And I don't, I don't know why that is an issue. I really don't. If it didn't sell, nobody would do them, and the people that live in them wouldn't live there. So, and we keep talking about lot size, lot size. Well, let me be honest with you, the neighborhood I grew up in would not exist if we did what the board is talking about doing, because we didn't have 20,000 square foot lots in my neighborhood. On Churches Island where I live, we had small lots, and that's where I grew up. I think I turned out okay in a small lot. I don't have CenturyLink, but...
That's right. That's because you didn't have internet to corrupt you, that's why.
And I think if people don't want small lots, they won't buy them. It's the density is the issue, it's how many houses you're allowing on the lots. If we've got a problem with density, the market will take care. I believe the market, you know, that's something we used to talk about in America, was the marketplace and not the government. The market will take care of what lots sell, and people will vote with their wallets as to where they're going to build their house. It's happening every day in Currituck County. And I think that the people that are developing the land, they're not going to develop something that won't sell. I went to a meeting this morning where they were talking about retirement communities. People do not want big lot, retirees don't want a lot of grass to mow. So who am I to tell them that you've got to have a lot of grass to mow? If they don't want big lots, let the market take care of it, not the Currituck County Board of Commissioners. Just let the free enterprise system that made this country great, let it work. That's all I got to say.
Is that any developers back there?
Do you have more?
I don't. That concludes my presentation.
All right. More questions for Mr. Woody.
I'd just like to say, thank you, Ben. We've had these discussions, and I do understand it, and hopefully, you've made it, you know, some sense to the rest of the people here in Currituck, because it is an issue, and people have discussed it. It's part of, you know, some agendas for people running for office even. So hopefully, they understand it better now. Thank you.
Yes, you will.
Yeah, Mr. Woody, you've done a good job. I know you certainly clarified a lot of things in my mind, and hopefully others as well. And just, it's just so hard to get caught up in the density versus lot size piece and trying to figure it out and understand it. You have certainly painted a clearer picture, so thank you for that.
If no one else has any more questions, we're going to move to the next agenda item. Public hearing in action. PB 1414 CASP Inc. requests for a conditional rezoning of 37 acres from light industrial to conditional district, single-family mainland on property located in Moayok on Inventor's Drive, which is located on the east side of Keratoke Highway, Tax Map 9, Parcels 26A and 26B, Moayok Township. Mr. Woody.
This is a conditional rezoning request. It was heard at the September 15th meeting of the Board of Commissioners, and it was tabled. It was tabled specifically to allow staff to provide information on density, which we've done tonight in a work session, and also to provide time for the applicant to provide additional information on the rail crossing and some of the design layouts of this subdivision. I'm going to turn it over to the applicant in a second, because they have a presentation they've prepared for tonight. But I real quickly want to say, this is a rezoning from light industrial to mixed residential. It is in the full-service area. It's full-service in the Moayok Small Area Plan and it's full-service in the land use plan, and that's the reason why staff has recommended approval of this, and that's because we, again, we're using the policy that's adopted by the Board of Commissioners. So I just want to be clear on that, where the recommendation comes from. The use is limited, again, a conditional zoning, you can limit uses or conditions of approval. If the board wants to put a condition on the approval of this rezoning, in this case, the applicant has to agree to that condition. Of course, if the applicant doesn't agree, the board has, can exercise its authority to turn down the rezoning. So there is some ability to work back and forth on this. Right now, the conditions are, the use is a conservation subdivision, maximum of 74 homes, minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, existing trees will be protected and preserved to the greatest degree... the greatest degree practicable, and then buffers to surrounding properties will exceed Currituck County requirements. So those five conditions are, will, if approved, will carry with the land. Also, you've got a conceptual plan you can see on the screen before you. If this rezoning is approved, that conceptual plan also will be bound to the land. So with that, I can answer any questions or turn it over to the applicant for their follow-up presentation.
Questions of Mr. Woody before the applicant starts?
The applicant will be addressing the railroad issues and stuff, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. With that, we'll ask the applicant to come forward and give us a presentation.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. You had asked for some additional information last time, and I'm, which I'm prepared to share with you tonight. I also think that you were told some things from the audience last time and may hear some things again tonight that, after I sit down, that don't necessarily represent what it is that we're proposing here. So what I'd like to do is to take the time to kind of thoroughly explain exactly what Hidden Acres is proposed to be. Hidden Acres is what we're calling the subdivision, which I think is an appropriate name for it. And as the next few slides, we'll show you. I'm going to show you a little bit about the setting of this property. We've got a site that right now is mostly wooded with some areas that have been selectively cleared that produce sort of a park-like appearance. And we're proposing to maintain those trees to create, to maintain this park-like setting. If you look at the site from outside the property inward, you can see how dense the natural wooded buffers are. And here's another view from another direction looking in toward the site. And so we have an opportunity to really preserve the woodlands. The site is mostly wooded like what you see here. No, this is looking from the agricultural property to the north, toward the site. Yes, that's actually a road, there's an existing roadway that goes down through the site, and that's actually a roadside ditch that you see there.
Are those, is that the same road going to be the road that they use, and are those ditches going to remain?
The roadway will be substantially the same, the main road. And the ditch is the same way. Yes. Yes, that ditch that runs 90 degrees runs to the south, and that actually connects to an outlet ditch. And we would plan to work around that ditch. In fact, the Corps of Engineers has claimed jurisdiction over that ditch. There, we have had a wetland delineation done. The site has been given a clean bill of health by the Corps, all except for two ditches and a little bit of, and a small pond that's been constructed that connects to a wetland ditch. Otherwise, the site is entirely upland. So yes, there are two ditches that will be maintained. You know, the Corps of Engineers has begun to come farther up in the land and claim ditches. But other than a couple of ditches, it is non-jurisdictional land. So anyway, we have this park-like setting. We have heavy wooded buffers. I want to show you a little bit about the setting and the context on the next slide, what you've got. And this actually superimposes the proposed development plan on the county GIS. And you will see that we have the assisted living to the south, and we have some farmland to the north. To the northeast, there's the Baxter's Estates subdivision that was recently approved. And what I wanted to show there is that the closest lot is about 229 feet to our closest lot, and that is entirely wooded on both sites, that 229-foot buffer. Going from house to house, from building site to building site, is about 330 feet. Looking at it to the, to the south, you've got a combination of open space that's been recorded and vacant commercial property. And then going beyond that, you've got some existing residential. The closest developed lot is 630 feet from our closest lot. The closest undeveloped lot is about 528 feet away. So, you know, one of the things that I'm showing here is, you know, a few weeks ago, the staff had presented a proposed transitional buffer rule that had 320 feet of transition buffer area between lots of different sizes. And this project as proposed essentially complies with that proposed rule, even though you didn't adopt it at this point, but we are essentially complying with that. 225, 229 feet to the nearest undeveloped lot, 330 feet to the nearest future house, which isn't there yet, 630 feet to the nearest developed lot, almost twice that transitional buffer to the nearest existing house in Shingle Landing, and 528 feet to the nearest undeveloped lot at Shingle Landing.
Mr. Bissell, those, that surrounding properties, is that farmland? Farmland, the surrounding properties that you're talking about?
The property to the north is farmland. The property to the east is actually open space that's been dedicated to Currituck County. The property to the southeast is open space that's been recorded. So... So our adjacent property impacts have really been considered and minimized. So some of the objectives that, of what we're looking for here are to maintain a park-like setting, to kind of nestle these homes within the wooded areas, taking advantage of the natural beauty of the site. We're going to keep those wooded buffers that I was showing you pictures of. We're going to provide appropriate amenities, and really, we have an opportunity here, I think, to create what can be a model conservation design for this community. I mentioned amenities. These are going to be streets with curb and gutter on both sides. They're going to have sidewalks on both sides of the street. They're going to have a large recreational lake and a second lake, a little smaller. These lakes will be there for aesthetics. They'll be for recreation and for stormwater. Those lakes will hold a minimum of six inches of rainfall before there's any discharge off of the site. And we're going to maintain those woodlands. I want to talk a little bit about lot size. This, I'm going to show you several examples of the lots that are being proposed from this development plan. On the left, you see a typical lot, and this is typical of lots 27 through 32 on the plan, where you've got a 10,500 square foot lot that's deeded, but then behind it, you've got 100 feet of open space. And you have the equivalent of about an 18,000 square foot lot. Looking at the one to the right, these are some lots on the south side of the main access road. This applies to lots 41 through 45. Those have even more open space behind the lot. You've got a 10,500 square foot deeded lot. You've got 8,500 square feet of open space area that makes that lot the equivalent of a 19,000 square foot lot. Looking at a couple of the cul-de-sac lots, these are again back up to the buffers. You've got kind of an interior cul-de-sac lot there. It's the equivalent of about 18,000 feet. And we've got several lots like this one at the bottom that is a 12,300 square foot deeded lot with 11,000 feet of open space. So you have the equivalent of more than a 23,000 square foot lot. So our actual lot sizes vary from 10,500 to 12,300 square feet, but you have effective lot areas that are up to and exceed 23,000 square feet. And next thing I'd like to do is talk a little bit about the railroad crossing. We have been in touch with a lot of people. We've been doing a lot of homework on this. And we've consulted with the NC DOT Rail Division, both the people who coordinate it for the state and the people who actually approve the design of the lights and the crossarms and the actual crossing itself. Based on that, we have established a budget of about $210,000 for that crossing in order to meet their standards, so that we know that we have designed to that standard so that it can be assumed as soon as the requisite number of houses are along the road. We've also been consulting with Genesee in Wyoming, who is now the less E of the rail, and with Norfolk Southern, who actually owns the land under the rail. So we are identifying and meeting all of their standards and requirements. We are setting up a homeowners association budget that will disclose all of the costs that are involved. You know, there's a certain amount of time before NC DOT takes it over where the combination of the developer and the association are going to be responsible for maintaining an insurance policy and maintaining that crossing. And that will be in the association budget. And we're going to set up a reserve account, too, because there will be some unknowns. We will be fully accountable for making sure that that does meet all the required standards. As soon as the required number of houses are constructed in there, which we think is about 20 or so houses based on the current layout, that is eligible for petitioning DOT to take that over. And we know that they will because it will meet all of their standards. Yes, sir.
Have you established how much the annual fees are going to be on the HOA?
Not at this time. We know that there's an insurance policy that's going to cost about $200 a month, $2,400 a year. And, but there will be a full HOA budget that's prepared based on the final subdivision plan.
But $2,400 a year, that's coming out of the, all 74 lots will be contributing to that?
Well...
The $2,400?
No, no, that's, that's the, that's for all the lots to contribute to.
But you haven't established what the annual fee is going to be?
Not yet. And it'll depend on the final, the final amenities and the final approved plan. We've talked about lot size. I'd also like to talk a little bit about density. We had proposed 74 lots, which is two units per acre. As a, as a good faith effort, the developer is willing to give up 10% of that density. So we are going to reduce the request from 74 down to 67 lots. And what that does, it allows us to increase the lot sizes a little bit and/or to increase the open space buffers in strategic places around the site. And what that does then is it gives us a conventional, a density similar to a conventional development that has 20,000 square foot lots and 5% open space. But it's better than that. And it's a, and one of the reasons is it's a lot better than that is because of the dense vegetative buffers that are going to be in common open space rather than on the back of somebody's lot. Because some, an individual lot owner is not going to be able to go cut that buffer down like they would if it was on a 20,000 square foot lot. So those buffers will be there in perpetuity. I also wanted to show you what a typical streetscape is going to look like. This is very similar to the look we're trying to achieve in the subdivision. We're going to have nicely finished streets with curb and gutter on both sides, sidewalks on both sides, street trees. You're going to have nice yards and, you know, these houses and yards in this, in this streetscape are actually very close to what we're going to expect at Hidden Acres. As you can see, it's going to be pretty nice.
The footprints for where the houses will be set, that's going to be kind of on a hilled up, built up area? It looks like, I mean, from what I was seeing there?
Yes, the lots will typically drain to the street.
Yeah, sort of mean, yeah.
That's right. They may be on elevated slabs, raised slab. This is a typical house, actual house that'll be constructed. This is one of the models. So as you can see, they're going to be good-sized homes with nice designs. The price point is going to be very similar to the adjacent communities. The, in fact, this developer, which is Quality Homes, will be building the homes. They've built about 30% of the houses in the Shingle Landing community. They're building all of the homes in Baxter's Estates, which is the adjacent community to the northeast. They'll be similar in quality and value to those homes.
Shingle Landing is three to four? Is that, are these going to be between three and four? Because you're advertising 200 on your banner out front?
I don't, I'm not aware that anything's been advertised on this.
There's banners out there starting like 200. And I'm trying to connect the dots. That's Baxter's. But they're right in front of the entrance where you go to this.
Correct. Says next right.
Okay. Well, when I see it below that, the next right goes into this, so. So the price point is going to be like Shingle Landing, 350 to 400?
Shingle Landing was in the, in the mid-2s as well.
In fact, when we originally looked, they were 400 or 500.
There were some of the mid-2s as well.
There may be some mid-2s and then on up, depending on options and so forth. In summary, you know, we've got a proposed neighborhood that is well buffered from the neighboring communities. We've got a high level of design going into this community so that the lots will hold their value. We've camouflaged it well from the adjacent development. This project substantially complies with the proposed transition standards. We've got a community association that'll be set up with jurisdiction over those buffers and those amenities. And this project really conforms to both the land use plan and the Moyoc Small Area Plan. You know, the Moyoc Small Area Plan classifies the property as full service, as Mr. Woody said. But it goes on to say that typical densities in the full service, and this is from the Moyoc Small Area Plan, designations range from 1.5 to three units per acre. So we are actually at the lower end of that scale, at less than two units per acre. It goes on to say that all development should encourage human-scale development and interconnected transportation systems that support both vehicles and pedestrians. And we're doing this by connecting the, both the roadways and the sidewalks to the east and to the north. It further says that a policy is to promote compatibility between new development and existing development to avoid adverse impacts through design, including larger setbacks, landscaped afforded forested strips, screening, other architectural and site planning measures that encourage harmony. And we believe we have accomplished exactly these things with Hidden Acres. So again, we would like this to be a model community for conservation subdivisions. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Cameron, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bissell, what is the houses that we're looking at there that you proposed? What's the square footage?
That one model, I think, was about 2,400 square feet.
And would the average be 20,000 square feet or something, or 2,000 square feet or something like that?
I believe so.
You believe? All right. Thanks, sir.
Anyone else?
Mr. Bissell, if you'll move the map up where, I just want to ask about the
Mr. Bissell, if you'll move the map up where...I just want to ask about the stubouts. I've questioned that, the one that goes to the north. What's your proposed vision for both of the stubouts? Is that just for the interconnectivity of future building on that north side of that?
It is. That meets the UDO connectivity requirement.
And that property is currently just agricultural. Is there a vision to connect to that property?
Well, we're going to be running a sidewalk up there so that it could be connected.
And the same with the one to the...
Same with the one to the east.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Question for Mr. Woody. The information Mr. Bissell has provided as far as the railroad crossing, is that satisfactory to you think to where we...if it moves forward to where we don't run into issues like we have in the past with the railroad issues?
I think that's an appropriate level of detail for a conditional zoning. If the board approves this request tonight, when it comes back for preliminary plat approval, I think that would then be a more appropriate time to get a more detailed plan of how that's going to be transferred to the state. So at this point, I think they've provided adequate information for a rezoning request.
Thank you.
Has Shingle Landing's railroad issues been resolved?
Not to my knowledge, no.
And how long has Shingle Landing been there?
2007. When it was platted, I believe.
Oh, in seven years, the railroad issues still aren't squared away.
That's correct.
So we can stipulate that the same railroad issues that Shingle Landing is going through now be addressed before anything proceeds with this. Seven years. I would think in seven years, with the efforts of these people here, the efforts of the county, the efforts of the developer, and everybody's pulling their hair out and it's not straight, and here we're getting ready to approve another one. So my question to you is, can we make a stipulation for approval that the railroad issues that are currently going on at Shingle Landing be addressed and signed off on before they go any further?
You legally cannot do that because you cannot...if you're asking me, can you require action on another piece of property to be taken, that's against the law. So no, you can't.
No, I'm not talking about that. But I mean, we don't want to go through...a second development with the first one, we ain't got it squared away with the railroad issues, and they're saying they're going to get the second one squared away. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, that's not against the law, that if you stipulate...
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought you were connecting this rezoning to the Shingle Landing crossing.
No, Shingle Landing didn't have anything to do with it. I don't want to replicate what's going on here with what's going on at Shingle Landing for seven years.
Yeah. I think part of it is going into the situation eyes wide open and understanding that these things need to be clearly...and a lot of this was staff put pressure on the developer to make sure they were going to have disclosures. I think there's...I understand there's maybe been some lack of disclosure in a Shingle Landing situation. There needs to be reserve funds set up. So I think there are ways to move towards this to manage railroad crossings.
All right, let me ask you a question. Is it the same developer? I think it's the same developer in Shingle Landing?
No.
It's not.
It is not.
You didn't develop anything?
No, sir. I was simply a builder in Shingle Landing.
Okay.
Well, could I ask, would it be possible to get the crossing problem done before this is approved?
Yeah, and I guess...
I mean, why stick people coming in? I mean, the railroad could, for some reason, just say, "Nope, sorry." So they've bought a house there, which could have happened to Shingle Landing, and they could have got stuck. And I think probably the railroad needs to be contacted and, you know, whatever you have there, a right of way or whatever described, should be completed before you go on. I mean, that makes kind of common sense as far as I'm concerned. And I know some people, you know, could look at it in a different way, but you could hold people hostage that way.
Can I...real quick, Commissioner Martin brought up a great point. Correct me if I'm wrong. When the Shingle Landing people were coming before us with issues about state road, ditches, and all this other stuff, there was a conversation about the railroad doing exactly what Commissioner Martin was talking about, keeping Shingle Landing from going across that road, wasn't there?
Yes, to maintain access of the crossing, my understanding is you have to...a party has to continue to maintain liability insurance, and there's fees that must be paid. So yes, there are actions that must occur every year to maintain a crossing.
Okay, but did railroad at some point in time threaten...
That is my understanding.
Okay. So what Commissioner Martin is bringing up is a real-life scenario that's 400 yards down the road. And we're getting ready to think about doing it again. And I know I'm not missing on that one.
The only thing I can say...I mean, could we make this one of the conditions? It...I think it would be, you know, a way to protect potential, you know, buyers and everything else. I know the people in Shingle Landing, they were very upset and pulling their hair out over that issue there. And I know the homeowners association, I believe the developer wanted to put that on them, and they were not prepared to take it because of these issues, because it was going to cost them a lot of money for lawyers and everything else to get that issue settled.
Commissioner, may I interject?
Yes, sir, you can.
You know, if you do approve the conditional rezoning, the next step will be to prepare an actual subdivision plan. And when we have an actual subdivision plan, at that point, we can begin to work on an actual contract with the railroad company that would be based on that plan.
But they don't have to approve?
No. And if they don't, then nor do you.
Well, that is the...I'm only saying for the...to protect, you know, potential citizens in the future and to...I would just, you know, like to see that part of the, you know, approval of anything here that when it goes forward, you know, it's a done deal.
I would think the board could ask for a condition related to the status of that railroad crossing. And I'm looking at the attorney to confirm that.
I mean, as Mr. Woody said to you earlier about conditional zoning, you may seek to place a condition on this rezoning. However, the applicant would have to agree to that condition. If the applicant did not agree and the board was still intent on seeing that condition placed on the approval, then you would be in a position to deny the application.
Can we make it? Can we continue it until they get approval from the railroad?
Well, I wouldn't want to, you know, continue it. What I'd like just to see is, you know, put it as a condition before you get approval for the subdivision itself. I mean...
The next phase.
That would be the next phase.
The next phase. And, I mean, we can approve this with that condition put there.
Mr. Bissell, would you be open to that as a condition going forward?
I believe we would. We've got to, you know, make sure we carefully craft that condition.
If you got a rezoning, yes.
I do have one question. That wording would need to be created tonight as part of any action if you...the board so chooses to move this forward. So...sorry, Mr. Beaumont.
Mr. Beaumont had a question.
Could you define a heritage tree?
What was the question?
I can.
Is that...to me?
Yeah.
I believe it's a 24-inch tree that would not be a pine.
DBH?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs, do you have something?
Yeah, I was just trying to clarify, just in my mind, what we're talking about is applying a condition relative to the railroad crossing for this conditional rezoning? Is that what we're...that was one.
Mm-hmm.
Now, is that...would that be getting the cart before the horse? Could we do the same thing before we approve the plat, that when...after you did it? In other words, what's the expenses incurred relative to curing the requests about the railroad crossing?
Well, we'd have to...actually have to have a construction drawing before we have a final approval from them. So that's...
I'm just wondering if we do this...can we do the same thing one time instead of doing it upfront?
Well, what I can't figure out is it's been seven years of Shingle Landing and they still ain't got it right. So what makes it...
But that's not their responsibility to take care of Shingle Landing.
No, you're missing the point. The point is, if you can't get it in seven years down here, what makes you think you can make it do it quicker over here?
Because we can put a conditional requirement on this plat that we can actually enforce.
It doesn't have anything to do with condition. If you think the people at Shingle Landing haven't tried to solve this problem, we've been beaten on this thing for two years, and they still haven't been able to fix it. So my question is this. If it takes Shingle Landing seven years and it's still not done, what are you going to do different?
You just said it easy.
Do what?
We got railroad crossings all over the county where people go across railroads.
Why can't these same people fix Shingle Landing's problem?
Well, it's not their responsibility.
But I'm just saying they're not that easy.
Thank you. We're going to be more proactive going into it as to where Shingle Landing...
Justin, come up to the microphone and speak.
No, we're going to be a little more proactive going into this development and working with the railroad and the state and so forth as to where...I personally didn't have anything to do with Shingle Landing development, so I don't know what their approach was to it.
There was no approach.
That could be, but I don't want to speak for the development.
And...I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The other thing, and I think Ben you'd alluded to, is a disclosure statement that anybody that signs a conditional purchase of a lot prior to the construction of the railroad crossing would have full disclosure that says a railroad crossing has to be approved before this lot's going to go through.
Yeah, and I think the UDO's done a great job of setting up a reserve fund for such things like this, which will be held accountable for as well.
I think the main difference from what I'm getting from this compared to Shingle Landing was Shingle Landing was trying to reverse engineer after the development monies had already been spent. They're already, in fact, planning on setting money aside in order to construct the railroad crossing, and are preparing for that expense that cost. They've done their groundwork. We're still trying to backfill Shingle Landing.
That's the reason two meetings ago that we tabled it, to ask that question, so they could be prepared to address it tonight. And they've addressed it, to me.
And you guys have had the dialogue with the railroad?
Yes, we certainly have.
And that's how you came up with some of your preliminary numbers?
That's right. And we've actually elevated them numbers some to pad it as well.
Management... And the other thing that'll be part of that disclosure statement is that based on the research, this is what we believe it will cost each property owner annually to maintain this until the DOT takes over the roads and the railroad crossing.
And obviously, that's our ultimate goal, is to get the state to take over the road as quickly as possible.
And I think, Mr. Woody, did you not suggest that maybe the proper time for that condition would be at the next step?
It's generally at the preliminary plat. It's probably the more appropriate venue for site-specific conditions. I would say that, you know, the board could...maybe an appropriate zoning condition would be to require disclosure statements for the railroad crossing. I think that would be appropriate at this juncture. It's not construction-related.
And maybe even...I mean, I could even buy into something that as this moves forward, that all...it will be handled before such as Mr. Martin had said before.
Before they start selling lots, you know, so that everybody's upfront with it. I mean, let's not have the same headache, you know, over...let's not make the same mistake it was made before.
Certainly. We want to avoid that as well. Yeah.
All right. Other questions of Mr. Woody or the applicant? We have a few people that have signed up. Open the public hearing. And first person we have signed up is Kim Old.
Don't wait towards the end while I'm answering the questions.
To...you're part of the development team? Okay. Next will be Jim Wheeler. And again, we asked you to state your name and address and observe the clock.
Not a problem.
I'm Jim Wheeler. I live Beachwood Shores. I spoke on this issue two meetings ago, I guess it was, when it was tabled and supposed to be brought back at the last meeting, which it wasn't. But that's new to here and there. I would still recommend disapproval on this for the same reasons I stated before. They've decreased it from 70-some lots down to 67. 67 lots could still produce 200 and some kids or high school...no, not necessarily the high school, but the elementary school and middle school in Moyoc are like at 95% capacity right now. This is zone light agr...or light industrial right now. I think it should stay that way. I think we need the industry more than we need the houses. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne Gomenas? Gomenas, I'm sorry.
My name is Joanne Gomenas, and I live at 124 Applewood Drive. Four years ago, my husband and I built a custom-built home in Shingle Landing. Our home is 2,611 square feet. Our lot is .80 acre or 35,000 square feet. At that time, we were told that most of the homes in Shingle Landing area would be similar in size. Shingle Landing consists of 82 lots and is a very nice neighborhood. I can speak for a lot of my neighbors as well as for myself. We do not want to see Moyoc with condos, townhouses, apartments, or small lots of 10,000 square feet with homes built on slabs. When you start letting small homes be built on smaller lots, then you are not keeping compatibility in the area. If you don't put a handle on this rezoning, the builders will come in Moyoc with massive building of smaller homes and lots for faster sales. Yes, as it was said before, we will start looking like another green run with lower-income families, and they will not take care of their neighborhoods. This will also hinder our schools, our sewer systems, our traffic flow, and that water flow from that neighborhood over to ours. Builders are all...they are all about in how much money they can make off of massive and quick-sale building, not what Moyoc will look like in five to 10 years. Just remember, they will be here today while building, but gone tomorrow after it is all complete. Then we, the community, are left to deal with the results. Moyoc is starting to be a very desirable place to come and live because of our taxes and our rural settings. So let's look at this in a different approach. Let builders come in, build a nice-size custom-built home with crawl space on lots and on lots with at least a half an acre or more. This way, we can make Moyoc a proud community for everyone to come visit and live. And I'd like to say that we have personally been there the four years. We are still waiting for the railroad to be taken care of, and our road shoulders are still not the way they're supposed to be. And that's why DOC or NCDOT will not turn the roads over to...we can't get it turned over to them. So I just hope that somebody can help us out on that. And I know if one particular home in our neighborhood that has a brick mailbox and the builder will not make...or maybe it's the developer. Yes, it's the developer. He will not go in there and force this particular resident to get rid of it, because that's one thing that DOT said they would not allow. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Davis?
Good evening. My name is Susan Davis. I live at 102 Creekside. I'm asking that you not deny this development, but the lot size is from 10,000 square feet to no less than 22,000 square feet. The fact is, the smaller lots are not compatible with the surrounding developments. Also, the waste treatment plant was for businesses. However, due to the fact the county chose to allow residential hookup, we're now about to open the floodgate to smaller lot developments, which I'm asking to deny. to open the floodgate to smaller lot developments, which I'm asking to deny. And another thing about the railroad crossing, I know the last time, if I'm correct, that lease fee and insurance fee, that is our access in and out to our development, is about ten thousand dollars a year. If I'm correct, the lease fee is about five thousand a year, and I think the insurance runs right around the same thing, the liability fee. And the main reason we have chosen not to take over that is the fact that we had no disclosure whatsoever to any of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Old?
Kim Old, 104 Tows Bay Drive. I just wanted to, first of all, good evening, and thank you for hearing us tonight. To speak on the development, I would ask you to approve it, the rezoning. And Forrest, one of the reasons, in Moayak, you talk about smaller lots and people coming in, I do sell real estate for a living, seventy to eighty percent of my buyers currently right now are military. We are very fortunate to live where we live, far as the real estate market is concerned. Just north of us is the tidewater area where the largest naval base in the world is, and I deal with a lot of good people. There, a lot of them are young couples, they're moving here, there's a lot of good reasons to move to Currituck. Taxes is one. North Carolina doesn't tax their really military retirement if they're older, retired, or active duty. You know, we do have a great place to live, I've been here all my life. The lot, the home that I live on right now, my lot size is one hundred by one hundred and fifty. I'm not opposed to smaller lots, and I think Justin is planning on building, it's not necessarily taking a lot and making it smaller and making a smaller home, that's not necessarily the facts. You can still build a very nice home on a smaller lot. And with, I think it was said that eleven percent of the county is in the full-service district. You know, that's not a whole lot of land, and not a whole lot of area. And Moayak seems to be the area right now, the proximity to the Virginia State line is the area that is growing right now, and that's a fact. And, you know, I just think that, not only that, just to give you a little insight on Justin Forrest, Justin is my son, he is, he's here for the approval. He hires a lot of people, he puts a lot of people to work, and if we're serious about job creation, you know, people need a job, they need a place to work, they spend money locally, he buys local, I think Currituck is all about buying local, and we try to buy, he tries to buy his materials and supplies locally, and I just think you should, I'd ask you to approve this. Thank you.
That's all I have, signed up to speak. I see a hand go up in the back. All right. Come one at a time, in the same rules, state your name, you know the rules, so, come on.
Ms. Walton might want to get his signature while he's here, too.
There you go. I didn't think I'd be here. Kevin McCord, I live at 119 Brumsey Landon Drive, Moayak, North Carolina. I'm watching the timer here, I bet you guys didn't think y'all'd see me. North Carolina's currently the seventh fastest-growing state out of fifty, the reason why nobody wants to move up north, no offense to anybody if they're from the north. County's growing, it's obvious. I'm here, I just came just to the heck of it tonight, and actually I spoke to Justin. I'm here for approval for his subdivision. He's a local guy, they've lived here their whole life, he's a good builder, I mean, he builds, I mean, it says in his company name, Quality Homes, I mean, he builds nice homes. You go riding looking Baxter Estates, the new neighborhood that we approved when I was sitting in one of those seats, which I don't miss, but he, you know, I mean, he's a good builder. I mean, we sat there and we voted and approved seventy-some homes or whatever for the Gee's Group, you know, and, I mean, he's got skin in the game, he's got to go to Food Line and get his groceries, and he's got to see the people in the community, and I think somebody made a comment before about, you know, they just want to make their money and get out. I mean, you know, he's active in the community, you know, I mean. Like I said, I mean, if you approved one, I mean, I kind of, I mean, I don't see the difference on his. I mean, go look at his Pointer Road, some of his other places where he builds, and they build good stuff, they employ local people. You know, everybody said the commercial, 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 they're not coming without rooftops. I've sat in meetings with y'all, you know it, I know it, they want more rooftops before they'll bring the more commercial businesses here. And like I said, I think what he has planned here is a, you know, like I said, it's a quality subdivision. I've lived here my whole life, so, I mean, I know, you know, it's growing, some people don't like growth, but I mean, it's coming, so, I mean, accept it. You know, as long as it's planned and it's, what's the word I'm looking for, as long as it's planned and, you know, and monitored like it should be, which you guys do, pretty much that's it. Like I said, I'm for approval for it. I own a landscaping business, I don't do a lot of work for Justin. When I was elected a commissioner two years ago, before I had to resign, I stopped doing his work, so I'm not up here because I'm doing his landscaping, I do very seldom things for Justin. But, like I said, he's a young guy, he's a hard worker, and he employs a lot of people in the county, and, you know, I mean, if the Gee's Group's coming out of Virginia's getting a shot, I don't understand why he's not. So, thank you.
My name is Chris Smith, I'm with Griggs Lumber Company. I'm not a Currituck County resident, but I deal with most of the builders in Currituck County, probably in lower Currituck. I would probably say that I probably sell anywhere from seventy-five percent and up of the building materials supplied in this area. I deal with anybody who's building, you know, a starter home, which I consider a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, to the typical home which you see now, you know, two fifty, three hundred thousand dollar home. Quality Homes, he's probably one of Griggs' largest customers. You know, we're a business that has an office in Currituck County, we employ a lot of people in Currituck County, we rely on the local builders, it's like Quality Homes, to help us keep our business growing. People like the Gee's Group are going to come down here, they're going to use subs and suppliers out of Virginia. Local people are not going to be employed by these guys, so, like Kevin said, if, you know, if the Gee's Group is willing to get a shot, there's no reason that somebody from Currituck County can't get a shot. You go to these restaurants up here in Currituck at lunchtime, it's not people, you know, from Virginia eating there, it's your guys who are building these houses, they're going to lunch, they're supporting the local economy, and when these guys are making money, they're spending it in Currituck County. So, I mean, I totally think that we should approve this subdivision tonight, because, I mean, it's better for Currituck County. You can't compare, what, five, six years ago? You can build the same house now that was built five or six years ago, and what's in the house, what's being put in the house can be the same. The profit margins, our profit margins, I'm sure Quality Homes' profit margins are nothing what they were five, seven, eight years ago. So, I mean, you're not comparing apples to apples. There's a lot of small neighborhoods in Currituck County that have smaller lots. Mr. O'Neill, you said you came from a smaller lot, there's nothing wrong with it. Hey, people can maintain smaller lots better. So, I mean, I vote that y'all, you know, if I had a vote, I would cast it that you approve this tonight, and, you know, help support the local people, and, you know, stop worrying about people on the other side of the border.
My name is Jody Turner, I live at 104 Applewood Drive. I don't think for myself or any of my neighbors are trying to prevent anyone from making any money. I just want the council to realize that when an individual spends almost a quarter million dollars on a home, we are concerned what is being established in the surroundings. And, you know, I dumped pretty much everything I had to come to Currituck. I actually graduated, me and my wife got married, moved back to Virginia, we came back to Currituck to raise my son, so I think, I'm just asking for the council to really take in consideration that, you know, Shingle Landing's got this persona that, you know, maybe we don't agree with everybody else, but the big thing is that we spend a lot of money. I can speak for myself, and I'm pretty close to a lot of neighbors, and just take in consideration, it's not that we're trying to prevent anybody from making any money or putting anybody out of work, we're just trying to keep the quality coming to Currituck. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Bob Crocker, 134, in Shingle Landing. We never did get our question answered, what the price of the homes were going to be.
The economy will dictate that.
I mean, the economy, I don't think is going to change much.
I'll speak on that if I can. I mean, right now, the market, you know, the general market in Moayak's in the two-fifty and up range, and Baxter's Lane Estates, we have a sign, the sign you're talking about, I think it's two sixty-nine-nine. Tonight, before I came here, I sold one for three fifty. So, the markets, it's a starter, a starter home is around two thousand square feet, just like, it's unfortunate that we were up here at one time at three fifty and four hundred thousand. We went through a depression, in my opinion, Justin survived it, just like all these other guys out here working have survived it, and a lot of people can't say that. But what I'm telling you is, what a house was back then, the same house, is you're upside down. A lot of people are upside down in this market, and you can build a house, the same comparable house today, cheaper or as cheap per square foot as the same house that was four hundred thousand dollars. So, to answer your question, I'm going to say starter price, mid-two hundreds and up, and hopefully they're going to be in the up-three hundred range or better.
The only other question I have is the drainage. I think, Mr. Petrie, you even brought that up. You know, this is all flowing our direction, if you come down, you know, we get a rainstorm, the whole front of our neighborhood is flooded. And now, you know, we're taking a lot more away, a lot more land that's going to absorb that water, so, you know, is there anything else going to be done to the drainage so it doesn't make it worse for our neighborhood? You know, I mean, several times we've had water right up to the roads, over the ditches and everything in the whole front of our neighborhood, so, something else I'd like you to take in consideration.
I think, wasn't there a comment by the engineer that the on-site ponds would handle a six-inch rain?
It'll have to meet the new state's stormwater requirements.
And have to meet the new state, but a six-inch rain is a pretty significant rain, isn't it?
Well, the one thing I would like to request until those ponds are put in during construction, if this is approved, that they use silt fences and trepidity curtains, because they don't use that in Currituck, and I can tell you, the way the ditches fill up and everything, especially the ditch that runs down behind, behind our development and the one over on Baxter, it's filled in quite a bit since they've been building, because there's no, there's no silt fence or trepidity curtains, the runoff is, you know, so...
Is that true, Ben? Do we not require anything?
You could require silt fencing as a condition of the zoning approval, but no, the county does not have a requirement for silt fencing, but I believe the state does.
Yeah.
I can tell you, there's none used when they were building Shingle Landing, and in fact, if you go look at the houses they're building in the front section, there's absolutely none, so, the water runs down, fills up our ditches now, we got to be responsible to clean them. I'm just surprised that all developments, that's not a requirement.
Mr. Bisel is going to address that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
As part of the approval process, before this thing goes to construction, we're required to get both a state sedimentation and erosion control plan approval and a state stormwater permit, and that erosion control permit will require the use of silt fences to keep siltation, visible siltation on-site. In fact, I think it's within the first seventy-five feet and the last twenty-five percent of the measures, you're not supposed to see any siltation before it leaves the site. The stormwater permit will be also issued by the state, but the county actually has a tougher standard than the state does on that, so the county will be issuing its own stormwater approval, too, to make sure that we actually retain that six inches of stormwater that we talked about. And so, the stormwater runoff will actually decrease as a result of the development from what you see on the site in its current condition.
Thank you. Thank you. Any, you've already spoken. Anyone else that hasn't spoken? Yes, sir?
Good evening, how y'all doing? My name is Mark Sherwood, I am a non-resident of Currituck County. However, I do commute every day from Passant County to work here. I am employed, I do do some of Justin, Mr. Old's, work. However, I don't buy paint from Elizabeth City Sherman Williams, I buy all my paint right here at the Moayak store, spend well over ten grand a month. I have six employees, all of us eat breakfast over here in the morning, whether it's Hardee's, McDonald's, we eat lunch here. A lot of times on the way home, we're stopping at the gas stations, getting drinks, and I do believe if we do go ahead, we, I've heard taxpayers tonight, I've heard Century Link, the more people we bring in, the more corporations, the more money that we're going to generate to revenue to build this up. If we keep a closed mind and shutters over our eyes, we'll never see the things change from the incident with Shingles Landing. We can't hold one bad developer and just look at everybody the same way, because we are learning from our mistakes and going forward and trying to correct these wrongs. Thank y'all, and have a good night.
Thank you. Mr. Wheeler, you didn't use your whole three minutes. Go ahead, and then we're going to move on.
No, I want to say, I have nothing against the builders, I've known Kim for a long, long, long time, nothing against the builders whatsoever, I've got a general contractor's license myself, okay? The lot size is what bugs me, it's the number of kids that could come into this neighborhood. If they would increase the lot size, decrease the house sizes, or not the house sizes, but the houses, the numbers of houses, that would help a lot. That was my concern.
Thank you.
How many lots could they actually get on this property, roughly?
Same amount. Density. Yeah, I mean, I think Mr. Bisel showed that if they didn't have the open space, did you say a similar number of lots?
Twenty dollars worth of lots, we could get at least sixty-seven, plus that five percent of space.
So, I don't know that...
It's not the lot size that's driving the number of homes, it's the density of the amount of lots on that tract of land.
That's allowed.
So, making a bigger lot size, they can still put as many homes on there without violating the density requirements of the UDO.
It'd just be less...
It'd just be less open space, less green space.
The whole point is it needed less houses.
And that's not addressed, that's not addressed by the density in the UDO.
I didn't mention that.
And, Mr. Wheeler, to his point, and I don't know, we've heard this several times, it's come up about the developments driving a potential overcapacity of our schools. I think he spoke to that, we've heard it before. And my drop, my take from that is that should be a consideration that we utilize in determining if we go forward with developments, because the consequence would be, we'd have to have another school.
Right.
I think this would be a good opportunity and maybe more artful for the county attorney, but, to explain it, if we prohibit a development based on the potential impact it'll have on a school, that will trigger a state, well, I'll have the county attorney speak to that, you can probably do it better than I.
Well, it's a county ordinance that you have to consider when you issue a special use permit, whether they're adequate public facilities to bear the, I guess, additional persons that are brought on by that development, whether it be schools, law enforcement, emergency medical, fire, other county facilities. But you can't just deny a subdivision if you find there are not adequate public facilities and do nothing.
What would that trigger?
You're then required to develop and implement a plan to remedy the situation so that there are adequate public facilities.
Now, would that be a required mandate by the state? In other words, my understanding is if we said, okay, we got to stop this now because we're going to have to end up building a school if we keep doing this. If we did that, my understanding is that would trigger a state-mandated requirement that we, as a board, would have to in a timely manner, come up with... timely manner, come up with a resolution that would require us to build a school. In other words, you can't have an open-ended moratorium. You have to address the issue and rectify it, and it's a state mandated law that we do so with in a prescribed period of time. So, if this board were to utilize, it's my understanding.
But it's a county ordinance requirement, but you're right relative to state applied law. It's case law. Our courts have made that determination, that a property owner, of course, has the right to make some reasonable use of their property. And so, you cannot impose a moratorium or prevent development of property forever. If, again, you have this adequate public facilities ordinance, and you make a determination that there, for example, are not adequate schools to support the children that may derive from this subdivision if approved and constructed, then it's incumbent upon you to move forward with implementation of a plan and construction of school facilities that will allow for development of that property and other similarly situated properties within the county.
I would also add, the statistics that I just saw last week show, and correct me if I'm wrong, almost a steady decline on the number of students in the schools just about throughout Currituck County for the next upcoming 10 years. So, I know that it's being monitored very closely for that exact reason, that we do not overcapacity, you know, exceed our capacity of schools.
Mr. Woody, is that not something that you look at on each and every development that comes forward, is adequate facilities, school capacities, and all that kind of stuff?
We do.
So, it's something that you're on top of each and every time.
We do. We track every subdivision, and every lot that's given preliminary plat approval is assigned a student generation rate. So, we assign a number of students to every lot that's not even built yet, but it's been approved, and that's tracked in concurrence with actual school capacity.
So, in essence, every undeveloped lot that's been platted out here has a number that's already assigned to it, even though there's not even a house.
We have, we have a number of lots before they're even platted. Just when they have preliminary plat approval, we assign a number to them.
Okay. In essence, then, what is, are we, where are we at as far as capacity in schools? I keep hearing it.
I can't give you the specific numbers. I don't want to put myself on the spot, but when I met with the superintendent earlier this year, the four-year cohorts, which are four-year groupings of students, actually showed that the school population is not increasing at the moment. So, the actual student population using a four-year cohort is not increasing. It's not to say it won't at some point, but right now, it's very stable.
But as far as capacity today, are we 80%, 90%, 97% capacity?
There is, there is capacity. And when you look at capacity, you don't necessarily take one school. You take, there are two middle schools in Currituck County.
Yeah.
And those two middle schools have capacity available. It's not at 95% or anything like that.
The elementary schools?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Two weeks ago, I brought up a number. I got them from you. What was approved in 2013 and what's coming down the pike on 2014 is 540 homes. Remember that number?
Yes.
That's a true number, right?
That's correct.
Okay. 540 homes. Right now, there's 490 kids in Moayoc Elementary with a capacity of 530. Do the math. 540 homes, what is it, 1.2 or 1.5 children per home, or is it more than that?
Depends.
Huh? Well, okay, not everybody's got, you know, hey, I applaud you. But all I'm saying, you blow the number out.
Well, and, and.
Real quick. So, I'm just saying, we've, last year and this year, 540 homes. And you got, you got capacity for 40 elementary school kids in Moayoc. Now, what Mr. Wheeler says to me makes a lot of sense. 540. And we haven't planned for that.
I would submit that in the 1990s, Currituck County was having a overrun of growth, and the schools were overcapacity. At that time, the Currituck County Board of Commissioners went to the legislature and got a law passed for Currituck County called the Adequate Facilities Ordinance. The purpose of that ordinance was to address exactly what you're talking about tonight. There is a formula that, which is why we have some new schools in the county. We have more schools and better schools than any county in eastern North Carolina. Even our old schools are maintained better than some of the newer schools in the counties I visit. But that Adequate Facilities Ordinance states very simply, once you reach a certain level, you have to start planning for an elementary school. And the county has successfully done that ever since that ordinance has been passed. And if you, if you invoke, I guess we're kind of using the N-word around here, moratorium. So, if you invoke a moratorium before you even got a, have a, something that you can justify, you have to start planning to build a school. And, and we, well, I don't, I don't know what we're talking about, then. We keep talking about shutting it down or whatever. There's only one word for that. So, if that is where we're going, then that will trigger a school have to be built right now, which we have not, we don't have the money for, which means an immediate increase in some revenue stream to pay for a school.
Well, we're currently, Mr. Scanlon, you can address this. Since we adopted the small area plan in Moayoc, you aggressively had discussions with the Board of Education and the superintendent on identifying some land in the Moayoc area for, for schools.
That's correct.
And that's, that's one of the issues that's come out of the small area plan. So, we are proactively looking towards that, and that was a request out of it. So, we are, we are working on that.
Well, I want to finish what I was saying. That has been used successfully since the 90s, and that's why we have the new schools we have in Currituck County. That's why you have a new high school. That's why you have a new school in Jarvisburg. You have a new school in Shawboro. You have a new middle school out here in Moayoc. You've had remodels at so many, at all the schools and additions put on them, because the system is working. That was adopted by Currituck County. And what the real issue is, is if we don't want people to build two houses per acre or whatever, we need to quit the running around back and forth and have a discussion on what the real issue is. If we don't like the densities, let's have a density discussion. We're talking about everything except what people are, except the density. If that's the issue, let's have a density discussion. And we're going to have an election in, in two weeks. We're going to get probably some new board members, at least two. And that would be a great time to sit down and start discussing the, where we go forward. I don't, we pass rules, and people come forward, they meet the rules, and then we jerk the rug out from under them. Change the rules if we don't like the rules. We had a Moayoc Small Area Plan. Two of the candidates that are running voted to approve this Moayoc Small Area Plan and asked us to approve it. We approved it. We've been following it. And that was less than six months ago. And now, we're already talking about throwing that out, because somebody wants to build a house. I don't know what to do. I mean, every, we follow the plans, and then we don't, we want to throw them out. When it's, people bought, people use this, these, people that are selling the land, that's their 401K. You know, not everybody had an IBM job and retired and moved down here with a 401K. A lot of the local people, the farmers and, and the old timers here, that was, that is their retirement. That farmland, they farmed for many years or rented out, and now they're cashing in their 401K. If we want it to be a less rich 401K, then we need to change the densities. That's as simple as that. We need to change the densities. But people are going to sell land. People are going to move here. There was people that didn't want Shingle Landing here, and we approved it. There was people that didn't want every subdivision in this county, and it's approved. And people are here because somebody on a board of commissioners said, they meet the requirements, and we let it go forward. And, and I don't know, I'm befuddled as to what it is. We, I don't know.
You and myself as well, Mr. Chairman. I agree with what you're saying. Thank you.
So, anyways.
I want to say something.
Yes, sir.
My blazing glory.
Go ahead.
There's people sitting right here tonight, and Ben Woody, you can confirm, in March or April, and I asked Leanne to pull the minutes, and there wasn't any minutes taken. We talked about density, the lot size. Density, the lot size. There's people sitting here tonight that go, Ben Woody, lot size. I heard it. I can name names. And I asked her to pull the minutes. Now, all of a sudden, it's 180 degrees different. It's lot size. It's like the gentleman said, it's lot size. Because, you know what? She's group is a perfect example to me. It's lot size. And, you know, and like I said, there's people sitting here tonight talking about density that argued lot size. Argued. Got witnesses.
I don't, I don't know what to say. I wasn't one of them.
Yes, you were.
Not lot size.
Yes, you were.
Oh, yeah. I said, let the market take care of itself.
You sat on my left shoulder. You said lot size, but you called it in.
Absolutely. Let the market take care of the lot size. Now, I'm not going to stand up here and argue. We need to move on. That's, that's all the public comments. I'm closing the public hearing and asked the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a motion to deny the rezoning. The plan, to me, is the proposed density is not appropriate for the location, since larger lot subdivisions exist in the north and the south, and that the request is not reasonable and not in the public interest.
We have a motion for denial. Do we have a second? Hearing no second, the motion dies. Do we have a substitute motion? I'm going to do like Ben Woody. I'm going to scratch my head.
I'm going to move to approve, or I am going to make a motion to approve PB 1414 due to its consistency with the Moayoc Small Area Plans, density allowance for the full service classification, and that the request is reasonable and in the public's interest. And I'm going to pause and say, do we need to mention the railroad now, or did we decide that that was on the plat approval? It's, it's really up to the board. I mean, you perhaps could add the condition of disclosures, if you wanted to do that. And of course, the applicant has to accept that condition. But it is something that will be able to be dealt with at the preliminary plat stage, too. So, there is another round of this project, if it moves forward. Well, I'm going to add the condition that the disclosure, full disclosure on the railroad be provided and be agreed to as a contingency of that, that motion to approve.
I'll second it.
We have a motion for approval in a second.
I was, Mr. Chairman, you get on the record the applicant's consent to that additional condition.
Mr. Bissel?
He nodded.
You consent?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I want to make sure you said it loud enough, everybody could hear it. Okay. We have a motion in a second. We have any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Motion carries. Next item, public hearing in action, PB 1418. Yeah. Well, let's take five.
All right. Let's move, let's move this.
Call meeting back to order. Next item is, public hearing in action, PB 1418, Currituck County, a request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance to clarify and revise miscellaneous sections of the ordinance. The revisions correct and clarify the identified sections in the UDO as it relates to nonconformities, accessory uses and structures, stormwater management, setback in building height standards, sidewalk standards, minor subdivision definition, public meeting notification requirements, subdivision, infrastructure maintenance, private access roads, variance findings of facts, and nonresidential design standards. Mr. Woody.
This, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, this is a tough item to start at 10 o'clock at night. But about once a year, a little less probably, the staff will bring forward, we call it a housekeeping amendment, but it's more like an omnibus bill. We bring forward typos, clarifications, things on the ordinance that just aren't working right or need to be corrected. So, we try to pick things that really aren't controversial. For the most part, they're usually, like I say, just correcting something, or if it is, if it is a change to a standard, it does not make a standard more restrictive. So, we try to make sure these are things that don't generate a lot of controversy. There's 17 of them. And I can certainly go through those individually, one at a time, and I probably, I probably should. But in the interest of time, I'm going to hit some of the ones that I think are of most interest to you as a board. And there's a summary in your agenda package, so if you want me to cover anything, I'm happy to do that. So, I'm going to dive right into it. The first item I want to cover is, and this is something I think we have, actually have a speaker here for tonight. This is an important one. So, in Currituck County, with the new UDO, we established that in commercial areas, you cannot have metal buildings anymore. And that was the idea, that there's 4,000 acres of lands on GB in the county. A lot of that lines a corridor, and the idea was to try to get metal buildings off the corridor and get them back into industrial parks or industrially zoned land. Well, the unintended consequence of that is, there are a lot of, not a lot, but there's a fair number of metal buildings that currently exist in GB-zoned parcels. Previous ordinance allowed industrial uses in GB zoning. So, that's why you see a lot of the development pattern on the corridor you see. Staff knows, you know, we don't want to make those nonconforming. They were built according to code at that time. Properties were zoned GB. So, what we found is that some of these warehouses that are located in these subdivisions that are zoned GB have come forward and are unable to expand because they're nonconforming. So, what we've proposed to do is, is basically state that nonconforming house, warehouses located in the GB zoning district are not subject to the discontinuent standards. What that means in English is, it doesn't make them, if you quit, if a nonconforming use lapses for a period of 180 days, it has to convert to a conforming use. So, one is, we're suggesting to remove that requirement and to allow some expansion of these existing industrial buildings. That's important, because there's a handful of subdivisions, particularly in lower Currituck, that we're seeing more interest in. They're starting to, you know, getting new tenants, getting additions, building activity. It's a real positive, because most of these tracks that are zoned GB are actually not on the highway where the existing buildings are. So, what we're recommending is that we don't deem those basically to be nonconforming and allow them to expand. What staff selected was, initially was a 25% expansion area, because that's what we use for an accessory use. Accessory uses are 25%. But at the planning board, we even discussed allowing that expansion to be up to 50%. So, for example, if you have a parcel of lands on GB, and you have a warehouse, it's 2,000 square feet, right now, that's your footprint you're stuck with. If this amendment passes at 25%, you could expand that to 2,500 feet. If this amendment passes at 50%, say, you could expand your warehouse to 3,000 feet, a 50% expansion. So, what this does is give some of our nonconformities a little bit, a little bit of help, which I think is a positive. And of course, ultimately, what we probably should do as the county is, some of these subdivisions that are zoned GB, that truly are industrial subdivisions, we should probably go in and just zone those light industrial and give them free rein or free, you know, the ability to use those properties as industrial properties. But that's perhaps a different discussion for another day. That's an important one. Another thing I wanted to bring up.
Mr. Woody?
Yes, sir.
Let me ask you one question.
Yes, sir.
And I think I already knew the answer. Don't preclude someone residential setting from building a metal garage or something like that, does it?
It does not. No. This only applies to, our, our design standards only apply, only apply to commercially zoned properties.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Another thing that came up is manufactured home parks and existing camper subdivisions. The old ordinance allowed those folks to have 100-square-foot accessory structures. We left that standard out. So, if you've been in a manufactured home park or a camper subdivision, you haven't been able to have an accessory structure for the past year and a half, which is not good. So, we would propose putting that back in. The 100 square foot's been in the ordinance for a long time. It's very minimal. Gives these folks some sort of building to put a lawnmower in or something of that, that nature.
What, say again, did you say campground?
I said camper subdivisions. So, yes, that would be like Walnut Island, a camper subdivision.
It wouldn't be Hampton Lodge.
Not a campground, no, sir.
Okay.
It would be an existing camper subdivision, so it's a creation of lots, or a manufactured home park.
Okay.
So, there's, another thing I think that is of note to the board is, we have seen, this comes up a lot, actually. So, we have an ordinance that says on vacant lots, you're limiting on what you can put on a vacant lot. And that's a lot with no house, no principal structure, principal use. You can put piers, docks, boathouses, boatlifts, a single storage shed for the upkeep of a lot, things of that nature. One thing that we found really coming up in the off-road area is, a lot of the oceanfront lots, particularly in Swan, you started to see some erosion there, and they really, some of them really. some of them have really become just unusable at this point. The second row owners are starting to buy those oceanfront lots directly in front of them, and what they want to do is put in a, a dune walkover, a beach crossover, so effectively, you would live in the second row, buy the lot in front of you, oceanfront, and then put in some infrastructure to walk over the dune. So, staff wanted to add that in, just to clarify that was acceptable, which, which makes sense.
Makes sense, it kind of expands the walkway.
Well, it can be, but, uh.
Right.
Another thing we've done is, we do allow some setback encroachments, so you can put some porch, you can put porch, uncovered porches, things that allow the infiltration of water can set, can encroach into a setback, up to three feet for impervious features and five feet for pervious, so that gives a little flexibility for your deck and things. We clarified that that doesn't apply to second story and third stories, so when you have an, you only have 10-foot setbacks a lot of times on the beach, so you're allowing some encroachment on the bottom ground, on the bottom floor. But I don't think you want decks that are on the second and third levels to be five feet in a setbacks, because then you would literally have 10 feet between decks at second and third levels, which probably isn't a safe situation. So, we did clarify that setback encroachment, it's just for ground floor improvements. Another thing, building height, is our old ordinance measured building height from the average established grades, who take a lot, get the average grade around the corners of the house and measure 35 feet from that point. The new ordinance measures the height from the front building facade. The problem with that is, especially on the beaches, oceanfront lots, you have such a dramatic change in topography, that when you measure the height from the front building facade, and if your lot is partially on the dune in the back, it makes your rear of your house very, very short, very compact. So, we're suggesting to go back to the average grade of the lot to measure height, and I know that that's come up multiple times over the past year and a half.
To Ben, what this would do was fix the issue that we discussed sometime.
It is, you and I have discussed it before, and I've had some other, other constituents and commissioners call too, but it goes back to the way we used to measure height, which I think is something most of the contractors and folks are comfortable with and agree Minor subdivisions, we wanna, we wanna exempt minor subdivisions from sidewalk requirements. It's, it doesn't make a lot of sense, because minor subdivisions are divided on existing roads, so they're building no roads, and a lot of times the minors are, are just kind of segregated, so we would suggest exempting minors from sidewalk requirements. Now, we passed a rule recently that if a minor is then used to parlay into a major, those requirements come back into play, so it doesn't get you out of sidewalk requirements for major, but if you're in fact cutting a lot out for your son or your daughter, you don't have to put a sidewalk in front of the lot. Public notice signs, one thing I want, is we do, we post properties for community meetings, or developers do for community meetings, and the county posts them for public hearings. We're required by statute to do that, but it doesn't say what has to be on the sign. If you've seen our yellow signs, you know they're illegible. We, we require all this information to be on the sign, which we do by county ordinance. Staff is suggesting to remove that information and just let, let the county put a Z or just some Z and a phone number, something very simple and very big that people can see. Because I think folks know the yellow signs mean public hearing, but nobody could possibly read the information on that.
Had to stop the car and get out and go walk over to it.
Yeah, which is in a good situation on a 60 mile, people are driving 60 miles per How many road, we provided the county some cross-sections for private access streets, I'll give them credit for that, they're very nice. Most of the time, you have a ditch on each side of the road, they had a scenario where they wanted to put a big ditch on one side and kind of angle the road towards the one ditch, which we think's fine, as long as it carries the stormwater and is, is safe. So, we, we've updated the cross-sections to allow a little different approach for roads. We added a variance review standard, the General Assembly has required the Board of Adjustment to make a finding that the requested variance is consistent with the spirit, purpose, and intent of the ordinance, such that public safety is secured and substantial justice is achieved. I'm not sure what that means, but we have to have it as a finding in our Board of Adjustment variance procedures. And then finally, last, last thing I think I want to cover, and I can answer any other questions, is, we have design standards, and in the applicability of those, the county or the UDO says that nonresidential and mixed-use development is subject to the design standards. That's very broad, nonresidential can mean agricultural uses, it can mean industrial uses. We think the intent was more to have these design standards along the corridors and the highways, not in industrial parks, not in agricultural areas. So, we are asking that the applicability of design standards, instead of be, instead of being placed on the use, that it be placed on the zoning district. So, if you're in a commercial zoning district, you have to meet the county's design standards, which are basically no metal facades and some basic, you know, articulation to the facade, just some visual interest to the building front. We did exempt residential, institutional, and agricultural, it doesn't make a lot of sense to have commercial design standards to apply to a church or a farm building or something like that. And, um, and we don't allow, and we don't, actually don't allow new industrial development anymore in the GB zoning districts, that means that industrial's not an issue either. So, basically, it clarifies where the design standards apply, and with that, I can answer any questions the board has, on any ones I did not cover or ones that I did.
Questions for Mr. Woody.
The planning board, when you went through all this with them there?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, the planning board heard this request, and they did recommend approval as presented. There was one housekeeping item related to mines, and the planning board did pull that out and table that for more discussion, and that'll come to you in a future meeting. Thank you, Mr. Odlin.
All right. Open the public hearing, I have one person signed up to speak, Mr. White.
Good evening, I know y'all have had a long meeting, so I'll try to be brief. I had talked to Ben about the, the accessory, the, the warehouse, about the expansion and about the correcting of the nonconformity. Staff, I talked to Ben, and he said that staff would support up to 50%. I have several clients that are concerned, they have existing businesses, a lot of them, you know, had planned to do these in phases, and their concern is 25% is not letting them finish developing what they had originally planned. So, I just would like y'all to consider the, the 50% addition that, that staff had said that they would support, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, or I can sit down and get through this.
Ben, if a business wanted to exceed that, could they appear before the Board of Adjustments and request the variance?
They could, but I, I would say if a, the easier route is probably if a business wanted to exceed 50% was just to apply for a rezoning.
Okay.
I mean, I think that would probably be an easier legislative decision, but they could ask for variance as well.
So, essentially, if we approve it to 50%, if he's got a 2,000 square foot warehouse, he can expand it to 3,000, which means his business is growing, jobs.
Yeah. And I think it's, I think it's reasonable, and just so the board knows, and I don't have the exact figure, but I want to say that of the 4,000 acres of GB, I think we calculated that less than 5% of that has an industrial use on it. So, it's a very, very small percentage of, of properties that are zoned GB and have an industrial amount of building.
That would apply just to existing.
Just to existing.
Everybody else would go forward.
It doesn't enter, yeah, it doesn't, anybody that moves forward in undeveloped GB is subject to the design standards.
And the, the amendment that you read just a while ago only give 25%?
Yes, so if you concur with Mr. White, you'd have to include in your motion to increase item one to whatever percent you feel is appropriate.
All right. We have no one else to sign up to speak, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Move to approve, make sure I'm right here with what I'm doing, PB, yeah, PB 1418, due to its consistency with land use plan, infrastructure policies, and that request is reasonable in the public interest, results in a logical development pattern, and also would like to move to include item one from 25 to 50%.
I have a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next item, public hearing in action, PB 1421, Currituck County, a request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 6, required infrastructure to revise the water supply standard to require all new subdivisions and nonresidential development to be connected and serviced by the county water supply system when located within the formulated distance for connection and require performance guarantees when the proposed development exceeds the formulated connection distance. Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm not gonna spend much time on this, because we have talked about this amendment a lot over the past year. On August 4th, 2014, the board adopted a new, an amendment to the water supply standards that required, among other things, there were some fire suppression requirements and things, but all new subdivisions and multifamily developments must connect to the county water supply, excluding family subdivisions and lots in the Fruitville and Gibbswood townships. So, that was adopted and became, it becomes effective March 1st, 2015, so that basically requires a mandatory connection to the water system, no matter where your property is or no matter how big your subdivision is. What this revised proposal does is, it goes back to the formula requirements, which makes your connection proportional to the size of your development. So, for example, you have an X number of lots, the staff applies a formula, if you are within, if that formula outputs a distance and your subdivision is, is within that distance of an existing water main, you have to extend and connect. If your proposed subdivision is greater than that distance, then the developer would be required to put forward a performance guarantee at 115% of the cost of the water system in the subdivision and the cost of the connection distance. Now, what this does, and that, that's actually the, the way the old ordinance was, in fact, but what this does, as proposed to you tonight, that cash deposit is not converted to a letter of credit and is not returned to the developer. So, once you are subject to this formula requirement, you have to provide the performance guarantee, and the county holds it until such time as a water system is extended and the county installs that infrastructure. And staff would recommend approval of this request, this modified request, we think it's reasonable and it's proportional. The planning board also heard this request, and they recommended approval as presented. And I can answer any questions you have.
Anyone have any questions, Mr. Woody?
When would the effective date be required? When, when would it go into effect?
Uh, right now, staff has written it where after your action it becomes effective, so tomorrow.
Any other questions?
I'll, I'll just say that I was the one who moved to pass the other ordinance, and I stated that night, I believe, that I could have bought into either one of them, I didn't hear a whole lot of one way or the other, and I certainly don't have a problem with doing this, and so.
Anyone else? When I open the public hearing, I have no one signed up for the public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? Being no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve PB 1421, due to its consistency with the land use plan, that the request is reasonable in the public interest because it is focused water surface in existing developed areas and in nearby targeted growth areas, policy WS 3.
I second the motion. We have a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business, consideration in action for a five-year fuel purchasing contract from Eastern Aviation Fuels Incorporated. Mr. Scanlon, I believe this is yours.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, for quite some time, 10-plus years, the county has maintained a, a fueling truck at the airport. The larger, larger aircraft, when they come to the airport, are unable to get close enough to the fuel pump, so that we actually, under a rental agreement, rent a fuel truck and we'll deliver the gas to the aircraft. The rental agreement has been about $7,400, $7,200 a year it costs to rent that, that vehicle. Parallel with that, we have not maintained any kind of long-term contract with the company that provides fuel at the airport. The staff at the airport has had a conversation with the, the fuel supplier, who's the same company who rents the truck, and, and they have proffered to the county that if we would enter into a five-year purchase agreement for our fuel, that they will drop the annual cost of renting the truck from $7,400 down to $100 a year. And you have that agreement is in your packet, and the staff is recommending board approval for that, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have one question. Is there anything in here that keeps them from just going through the roof with the price of fuel?
Yes, sir, it's, it's the, there is a pricing clause in the contract, they'll be charging us the, the posted rate that they would be charging other airports for their fuel.
So, that's locked in?
Yes, sir.
And you recommend approval?
Yes, sir.
All right, questions? Hearing none, we need a motion.
So, move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I guess at the last meeting, we're getting, we were told we're getting the pumps upgraded to some modern, nice pumps out there as well.
Yes, sir.
Okay, next item is the last four members of the Economic Development Advisory Board. I put together the list based on talking with Mr. Bishop and from hearing from different commissioners, and that list is Keith Hall, Raju Upapalate, Roger Lamberson, and John Harris.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion for approval.
Second.
Second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is consent agenda. I do have one question before we, before we approve the consent agenda. The connecting Corolla, could you give us, I know this has already been approved by the board, and this is the ordinance that's approved to carry it forward, can you break that down a little bit, just for the public, Mr. Scanlon?
Yes, sir, what, what you have tonight is actually, in the budget, the Board of Commissioners approved a lump sum figure to start undertaking some of the design work associated with the connecting Corolla plan. What you have in front of you tonight is a project ordinance to take that money now and to put it actually in project line items, so that we can move forward with undertaking these various projects. The three main projects we're looking at is, of course, the number one priority established by this board and supported by the community is the design and installation or, or construction of the bike path from Food Line in Corolla. The first, the third phase, it's actually the third phase of, of a multi-use path over there, will be from Food Line to Harris Teter. Phase four would be from the Harris Teter down to the public bathroom at Yopan that the county maintains. So, tonight, what you're approving is the, the engineering, surveying, design, and bidding money, so that we can go ahead and enter a contract to have that work undertaken, and at which time, we'll be coming back for you with the request for approval for the funding to, to actually undertake the first portion of the construction. That will be based upon the permitting process that we have to go through, we have to get wetland delineations completed, and we have to have stormwater permits completed. If we can get those in a timely manner, we will be looking forward to actually constructing the first, first portion of that, that phase before the spring comes.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Could you explain number three? I'm not sure I understand exactly, the ratification of public safety and 800 meg.
This is a, was actually brought to our attention from Crawford Volunteer Fire Department. They are going, I believe, next Monday, the state is coming down to do a, a department-wide assessment for their ISO rating, and one of the, or one piece of documentation that the state was requiring is that the county several years ago installed a new 800 megahertz system. They wanted to see in place a, an agreement between the county and each of the individual fire departments that, that allows the volunteer fire department to communicate over the 800 megahertz system for part of public safety. The documentation needs to be in place for the fire department to get full credit for the communication system to be in place.
Thank you.
So, move, Mr. Chairman.
It's already in use.
Yes, sir.
It's already in use.
I understand that, but I don't.
It's in use, and it was built for that purpose, but they want some paperwork to, to memorialize it.
Help with the fire rating.
Yes, sir.
This is just a formality.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. All right, we had, made the motion.
I did.
Have a motion for approval.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Commissioners report, Ms. Gilbert.
I just want to echo again to the public and to all of the fire EMS, the partners that came in from SBI and, and just everybody that was involved with the tragedy that happened Friday night in Moyoc. My phone started ringing off the hook about 5:45, and I left that area around 10:00 PM that night, and I just can't commend everybody that was involved with that. I just can't echo kudos and just appreciation. I will make one point, be kind to your neighbors. I don't know the situation that prompted this situation, or what was going through the person's mind, but I would just extend, be kind to everybody that you come in contact with, you know, maybe a smile, or hello, or just, you know, somebody that's in your neighborhood, just be kind to your neighbors. That's, that's all I'd like to share with that, and. share with that. And also, early voting starts on the 23rd, 7:00 AM. The polls will be open. The polls will be open on Saturday from 8:00 until 1:00. So, get out and vote.
Thank you. Mr. Patrick.
Uh, yeah. I'd like to say that Sharon Methodist Church over in Poplar Branch is having a fried chicken dinner this Saturday night from 5:00 to 7:00. It's $7 a person, and it's, all the proceeds are going to local people in the community in need. At Sharon Methodist Church on Poplar Branch Road, 5:00 to 7:00.
Right beside Griggs Elementary. Mr. Idlet.
Yeah, just, I missed the last meeting. I just wanted to have a little explanation. As you all know, I had a liver transplant two years ago. I take a regimented, a regimented dose of anti-rejection medication each and every day, in mornings and evenings. The good part about that medication is it allows my immune system to not reject the organ that was put in my body to sustain my life. The bad part of that, it does suppress my immune system greatly, and I am very susceptible to getting sick. And lately, I have been. One of the reasons, I've had people ask me, well, we don't ever see you out. It functions anymore. There's a reason for that. I don't like to be sick, and I try to stay away from crowds of people. And so, I just wanted folks to understand that. It's not that I think I'm holier-than-thou or better than anyone, or don't want to attend this or that or whatever, but I try to be careful just because. And, you know, there's certain viruses that I can pick up that certainly could create problems with my transplant and could, could end my life. So, just a little, not a cop-out, just a little explanation, so people at least understand what the situation was. Thank you.
Very well said. Thank you. Mr. Martin?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Griggs?
Nothing. Good night. Thank you.
Mr. Beaumont?
I'm going to piggyback on to what Marion said about the, the response. Used to be, I used to have the office next door, and, you know, it was quite an event. Because of the response of our, our fire and EMS folks, that could have been a whole lot worse, not just from the flames, but from the other material that was in the truck, that because of prompt response, keeping some of those items cooler, we could have had a, a, a front-page Fox News-type event. So, kudos on that. I, I have several folks that work for me that, that live up in Virginia, and they were stunned at how that was contained, and it didn't get any bigger than it did. So, and that was by folks that have full-time firefighting. So, that's a, a double compliment, and that's it.
Thank you. I have nothing. Mr. Scanlon?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Next, we need a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I move to enter into closed session pursuant to GS 143-318.11A4, to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industry or businesses within the county and pursuant to the GS 143-318.11A3, to consult with the county attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege.
We have a motion. Second. Second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.